Good morning, everybody. This is a meeting of the Taos County Water Advisory Committee. And we... So I guess the first thing is I need to call the meeting to order. And we do have a quorum. We don't have our secretary to do the roll call. So maybe I'll just do a roll call. Can you do the roll call, Becky? Okay. Here. Present. Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Becky. We do have a quorum. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. You all have an agenda before you. So if we can quickly review that. Are there changes or additions?
Without our secretary, do we have to...
Old minutes. I see one that we have there with no quorum. We don't have to approve that. But we do have some minutes before us. But the first thing is approval of the agenda. So we need to take care of that matter first. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion.
Motion by Albert, second by Tanya. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we have our agenda approved and we move on to the minutes. And there we do have the minutes of January 29th, February 16th, and March 8th, where we had no quorum, so we don't need to approve those. We'll deal first with the minutes of February 16th. And I think we can approve them. We don't have our secretary here, but we do have the minutes before us. With a quick review of the minutes of February 16th, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll move to approve the minutes for January 26th and February 16th. They're very brief and there's no big deals in there.
Okay, we have a motion to approve both minutes, January 26th and February 16th. Is there a second?
No, sir.
Second by Ron. Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And we'll move on to the main subject of this meeting, which is the proposed transfer of top-of-the-world water rights. Application to State Engineer to change purpose and place of use and point of diversion to co-applicants through Santa Fe County, United States of America Bureau of Indian Affairs as trustees for the Pueblos de Nambé, Pojaque, San Alfonso, and Tezúque. And so this is a public meeting, but it is also a fact-finding process. So we do have a format. And the format is that the applicants will be given an opportunity to present their proposal for transfer of water rights. And then this committee will ask questions of the applicants. And after that, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments regarding this particular, specific proposed transfer that we're dealing with today. So the questions, comments will need to be pertinent and germane to this particular transfer of water rights. And so we ask anyone that does comment to please be brief and to the point. If the questions have been asked, then they don't need to be re-asked. And there is... There will be a time limitation on the questionnaires of three minutes. Are there any Aseca Water Associations or representatives of Aseca Water Associations here this morning that would like to ask questions or make comments? Okay, there is at least one. You will be given an opportunity to have a little bit more extensive time on your questions or comments. So you're also a Water Association? Okay. Yes. We should for the record note that Gloriana has arrived and is here for the meeting. Welcome, Gloriana.
Thank you.
Okay, and going back to the ground rules, then after public input, then we will close that part of the meeting. And applicants will then have another opportunity to respond to any questions that were raised or to make comments or rebuttals to any comments that were made. And after that, then we will, as a committee, deliberate on the information that's been presented. And then we will make a recommendation to the Taos County Commission as to whether to protest this proposed transfer of water rights or to not protest the proposed transfer of water rights. So those are the ground rules. We're going to try to plow through this. We're starting late in the morning, so we're going to try to get through without a break. And hopefully, I'm hopeful that it'll not take more than two and a half, three hours, but we'll see. So we're ready to proceed. And the first thing that we'll have... We'll do is to ask... Also, I would like to introduce a couple of people before we go to the planning staff. We do have a couple of people up here also in addition. We have our couple commissioners in the audience. Jim Fambro, I saw him earlier. And also, Gabe Romero is here. There he is, yeah. Anyone else from any of the... And of course, up here, we do have our county manager, Steve Archuleta, and our county attorney, Bob Malone. So I think we got all the introductions in order. And we'll move forward then to introduce the planning staff, Nathan Sanchez, to give us an synopsis of the proposed application. And then we'll hear from the applicants. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, committee members, members of the public. Prior to commencing, I would like to introduce the representatives of the co-applicants for the top-of-the-world water transfer. I'm going to have Sandra Eli come up and she could introduce the other representatives.
Good morning, committee members, Chairman Romero. My name is Sandra Eli. I'm project manager for the County of Santa Fe. We have Chris Benet with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, John Uten, an attorney with the county, Jerry Shepner, who's the county hydrologist, and Claudia Borje, who is the county's utility director.
I'd like to... I want to welcome the representatives and commend them for coming today to explain their proposal. At this time, Mr. Chairman, I will commence with the presentation of my staff report. You were all given a packet that's before you. And in that packet, it contains the agenda, which you just approved, the rules and procedure that you just outlined. Section three is the New Mexico Office of the State Engineer application. Section four contains maps of point of diversions to and from. Section five contains the Taos County Planning Department staff report. Section six contains a water transfer review matrix. And section seven contains the deeds of the property from the top-of-the-world ranches. Now I'd like to continue to section five, which is my staff report. The applicants for this proposal are the County of Santa Fe, the United States of America, Department of Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs as trustees of Pueblos de Nambé, Pojaque, San Eldefonso, and Tezúque. Request is... Is a New Mexico Office of the State Engineer to change point of diversion, purpose, and place of use. Application number is OSE, file number RG-01441, ETA L subfile 28.1 and 29.1, cause number 72C-V09780, Red River. The requested transfer of groundwater is 1,141 AFA consumptive use is from the United States of America Department of Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs, held in trust for the Pueblo de Nambé, Pueblo de Pojaque, Pueblo de Eldefonso, and Pueblo de Tezúque. Plus 611.4 AFA consumptive use is from Santa Fe County totaling 1,752.4 AFA consumptive use. The location is moved from point of diversion is groundwater wells located on property in Taos County, AKA the top-of-the-world ranches, consisting of 3,164.64 acres. New Mexico description township 31 North, range 12 East, portions of sections 2, 11, 14, 23, 22, 26, 25, and 36. Colorado description is township 1, south, range 74 West, portions of section 14, 23, 26, 35, and 35. The Taos County property number is 1071183264264. The move to point of diversion is to the surface water diversion to be liquidated on the Rio Grande at the Pueblo de San Eldefonso, the western half of section 18, township 19, north, range 8 West, New Mexico principal meridian. The longitude is 106.140366. The latitude is 35.87555. Side analysis is the applicant seek to change the point of diversion and place and purpose of use for the consumptive use portion of the described water rights listed in application as 1,752.4 AFY. There are 11 point of diversion wells listed in the application described as RG-1441 dash S through RG-1441 dash S 11. Located in sections 2, 11, 12, and 14, township 2, south, and range 74 West. Further description of the land are tracks that contain 10 irrigation circles, either in their entirety or a portion of which contain 1,164.29 acres. All lands where wells are located are owned by Santa Fe County. The purpose of use for the water rights is irrigation, domestic, municipal, industrial, commercial purposes, and all uses associated with a public water supply system. The new place of use would be within the Pojaque Basin Regional Water System located in Santa Fe County, New Mexico, and as part of the AMAT Settlement Act to be operated by a regional water authority comprised of the Pueblo de Nambé, Pueblo de Pojaque, Pueblo de Eldefonso, Pueblo de Tezúque, and Santa Fe County. Public notice. The New Mexico Office of the State Engineer application for permit to change an existing water right has not been published. The application requirement is once a week for three consecutive weeks in the local newspaper of circulation located within the area of the property transferring from to the property transferring to, and all newspapers of circulation within the described route. Any person, firm, or corporation, or other entity having standing to file objections or protest shall do in writing within 10 days after the date of the last publication of notice. The next page is the Water Advisory Committee recommendations. Recommendations before the Taos County Water Advisory Committee is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners if a protest is to be filed with the Office of State Engineer or that the application meets the public welfare criteria of ordinance 2013-9 as amended. The Taos County Water Advisory Committee must review the application for permit to the Office of State Engineer with the following criterias. And there are 10 of them. First one is cultural protection. Number two is agrarian character. Number three is ecological health and vitality of watersheds. Number four is long-term economic development potential. Number five is recreational tourism. Number six is public information. Number seven is water supply management. Number eight is conservation. Number nine is conjunctive management. And number 10 is minimizing water contamination. That concludes my staff report. Is there any questions from the Water Advisory Committee?
See no questions.
Then I'll allow the applicant to present their application.
Thank you, Nate. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Romero, members of the committee, thank you for inviting us, the co-applicants to describe. Mr. Sanchez gave you a brief summary of our application. So I'd like to describe the details of it to you. And we really are here because we think it's important to foster goodwill and understanding between the parties to the AMAT settlement and North Taos County. And in the spirit of transparency, we want you to be aware of what we are applying for and what our intentions are. So the parties involved, as Mr. Sanchez says, are the Santa Fe County as a co-applicant and the United States on behalf of the four Pueblos of Tezúque, San Alfonso, Pojaque, and Nambé. And just as a point of clarification, the Pueblos themselves are also co-applicants on their own behalf. So the United States is a trustee of the resources for the Pueblos. The parties, the co-applicants, are currently following the state requirements for this water transfer. We expect it to be published before too long, actually, pretty soon, as we filed it back in January. So I'd like to give you a little bit of the history of the events leading up to our application. Years ago, the AMAT parties, which are in the Pojaque Basin, water users in the Pojaque Basin, started negotiating for water rights, really to settle the water rights of the tribes in the basin. That was in 99. Over a number of years, they reached a consensus on how the... On a settlement, and that was in 2006. The settlement, as it was conceived at that time, required water rights to be acquired by some of the parties as a solution, as a resolution of the water rights in the basin. And the possible options for acquisition of water rights were the contract water rights of the San Juan Chama project and these top-of-the-world rights that we will be discussing today. At this time, as it happens, the ABETA settlement also reached a consensus in 2006. And the ABETA settlement, we're all... I think we're all familiar with, is the resolution of the Taos Pueblo water rights in this valley here, the Taos Valley. And the ABETA settlement also needed water rights to be acquired to accomplish the resolution of the Taos Pueblo water rights. And so they were looking at the same sources of water, the San Juan Chama water, contract water, and these top-of-the-world water rights as possible sources of water to meet the needs of the settlement. So as it happened, the ABETA settling parties met with the AMAT settling parties and negotiated between the two settlements. As it turned out, the ABETA parties coveted the San Juan Chama contract water more strongly than the top-of-the-world water rights. And as it... What happened was the ABETA parties got the lion's share of the available San Juan Chama water, and the AMAT parties got the top-of-the-world rights and the... A piece, a small piece of the San Juan Chama contract water. So that was a deal between the two settlements. In 2010, then, the US Congress passed the Claims Resolution Act that approved these two water settlements and allowed the United States to sign off on the two settlement agreements. Now as to the AMAT settlement itself, the purpose, it had several purposes, not just to resolve the Indian water rights in the Pojaque Basin, but it also strived, strove, to reduce pressure on the aquifers in the Pojaque Basin, to preserve traditional agriculture by increasing flows in the streams in the basin, which would result from the reduction in pumping that's anticipated in the settlement. And also to construct a regional water system for... That would serve the four Pueblos as well as the non-Indian communities in the basin. That was the vision of the AMAT settlement. Now, I think you have our handout that has a few maps in it. One of the maps is the Pojaque Basin with the... Let's see, where did that go? Pojaque Basin with the four Pueblos outlined and the basin boundary included there. So the regional water system is conceived to divert water at San Alfonso Pueblo up into the basin, and it would be an essential feature of water supply for these four Pueblos as well as the non-Indian communities in that same vicinity. So I'd like to go then to the little bit of the, what I call, the mechanics of the transfer itself. The Top-of-the-World Farms is a 2,200-acre farm near... In Taos County, near the Colorado border, just a few miles south of the Colorado border. It's sometimes called the Sunshine Valley. Yeah, there's the map of the four Pueblos. Actually, I would refer you to the next map for this section of my description, the Rio Grande Valley North Central, New Mexico map. I don't know if you can put that one up there. It shows the location of the... Do you have the other map there? There we go. So I have the Sunshine Valley marked there as top-of-the-world pivots. It's... This farm utilizes groundwater and pumps... Pumping groundwater then puts the groundwater into center pivots that circulate the water onto the crops. The farm in the past has grown potatoes, alfalfa, and other crops over the years. It was initiated, the Top-of-the-World Farms, in about... In the 1950s. Over the years, the farm has waxed and waned in its... The acres that it has used to produce crops. And even the 1990s, it was... Very little was grown there. And then it kind of goes up and down throughout the decades. And so in... Between 1999 and 2006, Santa Fe County purchased the large portion of the water rights as well as the land associated with this top-of-the-world farms. So Santa Fe County ended up with the 1,700 and so acre-feet of water rights as a result of these purchases. And so then, that leads us up to the present time with the present application. In January 2015, as I said, the parties filed an application with the State Engineer to transfer 1,752 acre-feet from the farm to serve Pueblo and non-Pueblo residents in the Pojaque Basin. The split is 611 acre-feet are owned by the Santa Fe County, 1,141 acre-feet are now owned by the United States, the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Through a... The Bureau of Indian Affairs purchased this from Santa Fe County in 2013, I think it was, as part of the AMAT settlement. So the US held... The part that the US holds, 1,141 acre-feet, has not really been exercised for quite a few years as pumped water. It has been used by the village of Questa to repay their... They have a debt to the Office of State Engineer, and through a lease process with the county, we're using that water to repay their debt. The 611 acre-feet portion has been recently used off and on by actual pumping of the groundwater and growing, I think, mostly alfalfa. Well, let me go back to the 1,141. Prior to the lease with Questa, it had been used in conservation plans. Prior to the lease with Questa, it had been used in conservation plans that the Santa Fe County set up. So the submittal of the application has, was anticipated and required by the AMIT Litigation Settlement Act that I referred to earlier, the Claims Resolution Act of 2010. Like many transfers of water rights, let me get, make sure I get this right, the groundwater in this proposal, groundwater would stop being diverted at the move-from location, which is Top of the World Farms, Sunshine Valley, and water would begin to be diverted after, down at Santa El Fonsó Pueblo. So the hydrology of this is that in, starting in the 1950s, the Top of the World Farms pumped groundwater. They have about 10, 10 or 11 wells that they use, and historically have been used to pump water. This water that is pumped at the Top of the World Farms essentially captures groundwater that is on its way from the mountains to the river. There's a groundwater gradient flow, actually from Colorado as well as from the Sangres that flow down. The Sangres is where the water recharges, it goes into the ground, and it starts to make its way. And we know there's lots of springs on the Rio Grande, there's pretty large springs there, north of the confluence with the Red River. So essentially, the farms capture, capture some of that groundwater flow before it gets to the river. And so what we're proposing in our application is that that pumping would stop, which actually most of it is already stopped, the water would then flow, be allowed to flow to the river, would flow down the Rio Grande, through the Box Canyon, through Espanola Valley, and be picked up at Santa El Fonsó and used for this regional water system that is part of the, part of the AMIT settlement. Forgetting anything here. So what are the consequences of this transfer of water rights? What does it mean at the move-from and move-to locations? For the upstream areas, the move-from location, the transfer will actually put more water into the Rio Grande because the, by virtue of the cessation of pumping, would allow more water to arrive at the Rio Grande. This would then flow down, as I said, down to Santa El Fonsó Pueblo. Of course, flows, this would contribute to the ecological health of the river, the riparian areas between, well, the confluence of the Red River, say, and the, and Santa El Fonsó For the Pawnee Basin, the transfer will promote traditional agricultural practices because the long-term effect will be that the streams will have increased flow, and therefore the aseca systems will have more water to use to do their traditional farming. And other parts of the AMIT settlement itself, and the ABETA settlement too, are designed to allow the traditional aseca irrigation to continue for both Indians and non-Indians. And then, thinking regionally, the transfer represents a good regional use of water, we believe, and a creative solution to water issues. The exercise of water rights stays in New Mexico, and we think that the, overall, the system is kept whole. So that's my presentation. I guess I'll leave it to Chris Sanchez to...
Do you have additional presenters, or is that...
I, no, that's all, just, that's all. We're all available for questions.
Okay, yeah, well, we do have questions. We'll have questions from the audience after we finish the application portion. Yeah, the committee, I'm sure, does have some questions. And Ron, do you have a question? Do you want to start?
I'll answer now.
Okay, Tanya?
Well, you're, I do have a question. When you say the asecas down below in the pueblos and the things, the organizations that were settled out in the AMIT, oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to use this thing, that they will increase, their water will increase by not pumping at the top of the world? It makes no sense to me because the asecas feed off of surface water unless there's an extra well going in to feed into the asecas being put down there. I am not, excuse me, familiar with the AMIT settlement, and I thought that wasn't part of this so much as it is.
Yeah, let me clarify and make sure, I do want you to understand, committee member Larissy, the, in the Pawnee Basin, this is what I'm referring to, within the Pawnee Basin, there are lots of wells, domestic wells, municipal wells. These wells, as part of the settlement, are anticipated to either pump less or stop pumping altogether. And we do recognize a connection between pumping of wells and surface water, the groundwater and surface water interaction. So when the, as the wells stop pumping, the water will flow into the streams more. More water will be, more groundwater because the groundwater feeds the streams through springs and seeps and...
How many wells are pumping now?
Gosh, I don't know. What is their estimate of domestic wells? It's in the hundreds, 500?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of domestic wells in the...
No, I mean, how many wells, the wells on the top of the world?
Okay, yeah, the top of the world has about 10 wells that they have pumped from historically. They're, they're large, oh, sorry, Chairman, they're large production wells that they have to pump a lot of water for agriculture.
So you say they're still pumping now even though there hasn't been that much production on the land for some time?
No, no, Chairman Romero, they're, they're pumping waxes and wanes depending on the owners and how, how much they think they, how much they want to plant that particular year and how many water rights are available to them. Like I say, the 1,141 acre-feet has not been exercised through pumping for quite a few years. So those, there's really not that much pumping going on there right now. There's, there's very little.
So at peak production, maybe in the 1950s, there was a lot of water being pumped at that time for the crop production, but currently, the amount of water or the number of wells pumping hasn't been that great.
That's, that's a good assessment, Chairman Romero. It was greatest in the 50s, and overall, over time, it has waned to not very much now.
Gloria?
Well, isn't it true in the AMIT case that private individual wells will be tapped and people will have to get the water from these regional deep wells? And if a private well doesn't want to tap their well, then if they were to move or to sell their property, they would lose the right to that water, to that private well.
Maybe I should let Mr. Otten address that, that one. That is an issue that we...
Thank you.
Introduce yourself again, please.
I'm John Otten, I'm a water lawyer representing Santa Fe County. Good morning, I think it's still morning, barely, committee members and other officials from Taos County, pleased to be here. Perhaps if we could put up the map that shows, I'm sorry, that shows the four pueblos in the Pawnee Basin, maybe we could start with there. We could. And Chairman Romero and Member Domingo Satensio, if I could maybe just take one step back and try to explain a little bit what's happening down in the Pawnee Basin. Because I think one of the reasons that Santa Fe County got involved in this AMIT water rights settlement was to try and protect existing traditional uses in the Pawnee Basin, particularly asecas. And there's really two ways that the AMIT settlement does that. But let me first start by saying that the major component of the settlement is this community water system that would come in. If you look at this map, the darker blue shaded area, that is the Nambé-Pawnee-Tesuque Basin. You can see the tributaries coming off the mountain front. So you've got the crest of the Sangre de Crisos on the far right where that kind of brightest blue is. And then they're flowing from right to left, from east to west. You can see the Rio Tesuque at the very bottom, and there's the Rio en Medio. You see the Rio Pawnee kind of forming with the confluence of those smaller rivers, the Rio Nambé. And then the Rio Tesuque and the Rio Pawnee come together there in Pawnee Pueblo, and then they, the Pawnee River then flows from right to left, west, to the Rio Grande, where it has its confluence with the Rio Grande there at Santa El Fonsó Pueblo. There has been a great deal of dispute and strife in this basin over water for a couple of centuries now, essentially fighting over that surface water, those four pueblos wanting their historic uses. There've been, there are a lot of asecas that have been there for centuries. There are also people who have moved into the basin, or just the population has grown over time, and there are about 3,500 wells, domestic wells there. The AMIT case was filed in 1966 to try and sort out the competing claims to the water. The claims were several times greater than the supply. The claims of the pueblos, with a most senior right threatened really to dry up all the other water users, including longtime aseca users that had been there for a couple centuries but were not as senior as the pueblos. The settlement here is, the purpose of this is to try to bring in a little, a little more water into the basin from the Rio Grande for a regional domestic water supply system to make the supply less tight there so that we could settle the case. The two ways in which the, I think asecas are protected in the basin, one is all of the surface water users, both pueblo traditional uses and aseca traditional uses, their supply's really been diminished because of all the domestic wells along the stream system. They're, through all these valleys, the domestic wells are right in the shallow alluvium next to the creeks and the ritos, and supplies have gone down. And so this water system is designed to encourage people to get on the system. They're not required to, they can, they have choices. We're trying to provide incentives for people to get in, on the system, carrots rather than sticks. And Santa Fe County is going to, through the utility department, and Claudia Borcher there is the director of the county water utility, she would run the water system on the areas off of pueblo land. So county, Santa Fe County customers who hook up to the system would be supplied by the county water utility. And so we are providing incentives to, for people to hook up to the system, and new uses in the future would have to hook up to the system. The pueblos' uses would be provided from the water system. So of the water that would come into the basin about, oh, roughly, about 60% of it would go to the pueblos, and about 40% of it would go to Santa Fe County water utility customers. Right now, those uses are being supplied from groundwater in the basin. The pueblos have some larger wells, there are all these domestic wells. So over time, those groundwater uses would be shifted over to the regional water system. And so that would reduce the effect on the stream system so that traditional surface water diverters would have a more reliable supply. So that's one, that's one way that the AMIT settlement is intended to protect traditional uses. The second is, the pueblos, based on federal law that's available to them that defines their water rights, have made very large claims. Those claims, if recognized, if exercised, would be the first priority, would dry up the non-pueblo aseca uses. There's already been some of that, where the federal court has, has required upstream asecas to curtail. Water has been particularly tight on the Rio Tesuque. Under the settlement, the pueblos are agreeing to limit their priority calls against asecas. We are essentially are preserving the status quo, where the pueblos have agreed they're only going to make a priority call for their current irrigation, even though that's only approximately one-third of their first priority water rights. So they're, they're saying, we're only going to make a priority call for a third of what we could. Then next priority comes the asecas, and then the pueblos are saying the remaining two-thirds of their water rights essentially are the third priority. And all the aseca associations in the Pawnee-Tesuque-Nambé Basin have supported the settlement. They see this as a good thing that will preserve their future and allow them to continue, and allows for harmony between these competing water uses on a very, very tight surface water stream system. The pueblos have also agreed not to make party calls against domestic well owners who have not yet hooked up to the system as long as they agree to the settlement. So that's the basic framework of the settlement. The water rights that we're seeking to transfer provide an essential component to bring in this community water system and relieve these longstanding historic tensions that really have pitted neighbor against neighbor for several centuries now. And so that, that is what we're trying to do.
Follow-up?
Yes, sir. Anything in the agreement that protects the people that hook on to the regional water wells? You know, several years ago, in Pawnee, people that were driving on the highway to get to Albuquerque down here were being basically stopped. And so is there any danger that this could happen to these people that hook on to the regional water wells? I mean, what is there in the agreement to protect them from the Native Americans blocking the water to get to their homes?
Ms. Domingo Satensio, that's a very good question, very important, because that, the land conflict has been the other very divisive issue, questions of trespass and who has rights of ingress and egress. And that continues to be a problem. One area that we are resolving that is with respect to water lines. Under this settlement, Congress, as part of this settlement, the pueblos are required to convey a permanent rights-of-way for the water system. That's one thing Santa Fe County is, is requiring, the state of New Mexico is requiring, because we're both putting in substantial amounts of money to build our share of the system. And so by federal law, we will have absolute permanent rights-of-way for our water system. And so there won't be that kind of question of someone stopping you and saying, no, you can't do this. Santa Fe County is trying to work out those other issues with the pueblos in conjunction with these water issues. They have been very difficult issues, and they've created a lot of ill will, and this is one step where we are taking part, taking care of part of that problem. I don't know if Chris wants to say anything more about that, because he's, Chris Benet is representing the United States here. But anyway, from Santa Fe County's perspective, we feel that issue has been addressed, that there is clear federal law that, that makes that issue certain. there is clear federal law that makes that issue certain and takes away any concern about that.
I've got a few questions. What is the condition of the aquifer at the Top of the World Ranch right now? Is it fully recovered?
Maybe we could put up the map of the Top of the World Farm itself. Yeah, there we go. So you can see on this map, the wells themselves are located on the map. Most of them are in the southern part of the center pivot area, and there's a couple up to the north. The water table... I can really only speak qualitatively to that question, but it has, for the most part, has recovered. The state engineer did an analysis when the lease to Cuesta from Santa Fe County was about to be executed. And they determined that it takes 18 years for the water table to recover, or really more specifically, for the river, the Rio Grande, to recover from the loss of pumping, from pumping. So as I said, the water comes off the... It gets recharged in the mountain, and in Colorado, it flows under the Top of the World Farms to the Rio Grande. So the Top of the World started pumping, and when they stop pumping, it takes 18 years for the Rio Grande to get whole again. That's what they determined in their analysis for that lease process.
So with the wetlands in front or below the property, south of the property, if the aquifer was at its peak, at its peak, wouldn't those wetlands have water? Wouldn't you see water on the surface? All the wetlands right below the sprinkler system that belonged to the BLM? I think it used to belong to Chevron, but they donated it to the BLM.
Okay, yeah. I'm not familiar with wetlands.
So will the water, if they were to reduce it and stop pumping, will the water go through those wetlands?
Oh, I see. So you...
To get to the Rio Grande?
No, it would... It wouldn't go through those wetlands. It would just stay in the ground. And we're talking about, you know, 800 feet below the ground or some... Something like that. It would stay in the ground and then proceed to the canyon in the Rio Grande. So yeah, I'm not familiar with any wetlands to the south of the farms on the BLM land.
Well, it's actually on the map. You can see the green valley where the mine property used to be, right below the sprinkler systems.
I see the water courses.
Yeah, maybe the...
Yeah, I think those are just ephemeral water courses or arroyos. I don't know if I... I'm not seeing them.
No, there's actually alkaline areas where the water comes up and fills up there in the Sunshine Valley, all through there. You can see it on the surface, on the old mine property. I believe they donated it to the BLM. Pretty sure.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm not familiar with that particular phenomenon, so I don't know if it's related to the Top of the World Farms or not, so I can't really speak to that.
Go ahead.
There is a wetland. It's under agreement for wildlife mitigation, I believe Chevron has. And yes, this groundwater system is an old braid of the Rio Castillo. And so when you do reduce water use along those pivots, there will be groundwater coming back to the surface along that course. It courses all along from those pivots out to a nick mark along the Rio Grande, south of Lee Trail. So that, to address Albert's question. There is that wetland. I'm sure your hydrologists can confirm that.
So what's the time factor by the time it gets to the Rio Grande?
Maybe the hydrologist can address that one.
I'm not sure how fast the groundwater is actually moving, but the river would fully recover after 18 years. And in this analysis by the state engineer, and actually, it mostly recovers after about four or five years. So even five years after the pumping stops, the river recognizes all the water that had been intercepted. And then a little bit less each year until after 18 years, it recognizes it's whole again.
So you're... What is it, 20 years, 30 years before it gets to the Rio Grande? Or how's that? When are they going to start extracting it?
Oh, at the move-to location...
You see what I'm saying? In other words, it'll take years for that water to get to the Rio Grande?
Right.
And then are they going to start pulling right away, or what?
No, we anticipate this... The state engineer would not let us take water at our move-to location until the Rio Grande has recovered from the stopping of pumping. So if, let's say, the pumping stopped in 2005, then whatever pumping stopped in 2005, there would... The state engineer would let us take the water as it recovers to the pueblo. And after 18 years, we would be able to fully take that amount at San El de Fonsol Pueblo. But it would be a ramping up, because it's... The process of the river recovering is a ramping process. It doesn't happen all at once.
And also, will you be able to control the discharge? In other words, will subsedation keep opening up the spring and keep opening up the aquifer? In other words, is there any place that you can shut off the 1,700 acre feet right there once they got it per annum?
You mean at the river, or...
Anywhere. Is there any control? Is there any water management here?
Well, there... Yeah, the two places that are regulated are the pumping itself at Sunshine Valley and the diversion at San El de Fonsol. The water path in between there is a natural process that is not controlled.
I'm talking about the Top of the World. Once the 1,700 acre feet is in the river per annum, is there a way to shut the discharge off from the Top of the World aquifer?
No, that will happen naturally.
Yeah, so is this going to keep increasing as time goes and keep taking more water, expanding through compaction and subsedation? And it'll keep expanding and keep taking more water as time goes?
No. Once it... Once the river is made whole or recovers fully from the pumping that has occurred in the past, then it won't be able to increase beyond that. It will increase its flow up to the natural condition, and then it wouldn't be able to...
Okay, let's move back and give Ron Gardner... You had a question?
Yeah. I think we still wanted to clarify this. The pumps were shut down in 2006 or 2014, so that effect is traveling towards the river?
Well, yeah. Committee member Gardner, some of the pumps are still active. Most of them are inactive. The pumps that pumped the 1,141 acre feet stopped probably mid-'90s, yeah. The pumps that serve the 611 acre feet are going... Some of them are still going today, and it just varies from year to year.
And on that point, I believe the Bureau of Geology is intending to do more aquifer mapping out there to understand that groundwater system. They've already documented the springs to the river. In other words, the water that accrues to the Rio Grande through Taos County. There are significant springs there, just southwest of the Yoot Mountain. They've been there for all time. Locals know about it. We call them the Boils, but that's what is at issue, that hydrologic system. But I have some other questions about your settlement and your project, if you would.
Sure.
You said that the settlement was inadequate in 2006, that you came up short on groundwater use or water rights to provide for groundwater use? What was short on the first Amon settlement?
Well, the first in 2006, the... There was a consensus, a resolution, but it required water, a water supply. And that's what was short, and it wasn't conceived as it had to be groundwater or had to be surface water. It had to be a water supply. And that's... And the parties looked outside of the Puaki Basin to find that supply, because the basin itself is very water short.
On that point, you mean water supply in terms of water rights?
Well, it follows, yeah, that you have to acquire water rights or contract water to provide the water supply.
But these water rights don't create any new water down in your basin?
They don't...
So then what will be diverted from the river?
Well, they don't create any new water anywhere, and the whole system is still a whole system.
And, you know, to that point, and with all respect to the county of Santa Fe, Taos County's struggling with these very same issues on how to balance a tribal settlement against irrigated lands, against new water development, against sustainable water use. We're facing all the very same issues. These 1,700 acre feet would have provided an awful lot in our tribal settlement. So I'm having difficulty understanding how we're using that 1,700 acre feet for your tribal settlement when we have a tribal settlement that's now going to other areas outside of their watersheds to get water rights here in Taos County, harming our irrigated lands, taking water rights off the table. 1,700 acre feet is probably more than the town of Taos has in their water rights portfolio, which is our biggest water utility providing for our biggest population center. So those 1,700 acre foot could have duly served our water interests here in Taos County.
Right, yeah. I think that was... That was... Seemed enigmatic also to the AMIT settling parties when they were negotiating with the Abeta settlement. It would have made more sense to use the Top of the World rights for the Abeta settlement and use San Juan Chama for AMIT.
On that point, could you explain to all of us that those negotiations between the Abeta claimants and the Amon? This is all new to us. We have not heard of this before. Mr. Otten, would you like to?
Good afternoon, Mr. Gardner. It might be... We have a one-page handout. I don't know if there were enough. Maybe we could... We could put that up. That might be helpful. It's dated June 11, 2007. The committee members should have it. And so those of you that got the packet, but I think there's more people in the room than are packets. And just one more point on the additional water. So this would provide additional water to the Puaki Basin, because there will be up to 4,000 acre feet of water pumped from the Rio Grande into this system, into the basin. So that's 4,000 acre feet of water going into the valley, Puaki Valley, that wouldn't otherwise be there.
And on that point, how is that going to be used? What is the beneficial use of that water?
It is a domestic, commercial, municipal utility. So it would provide mostly residential uses for the county customers. Most of the... There are a few potential commercial activities. There's, you know, there are some smaller commercial uses, but by and large, the largest percentage would... From the county system would be going to residential uses, hooking peoples up their houses.
But you're not taking it out of the Rio Grande? You're just offsetting it against...
No, no. We're pumping it from the Rio Grande.
Going to be pumping all these utilities?
Yes. Yeah, there would be a big water treatment plant right on San El de Fonsol Pueblo. So we would... There would be a diversion structure right on the Rio Grande. So we would be taking up to 4,000 acre feet out of the Rio Grande, treating it and pumping it into this water system up into the basin.
Reducing your limited supply of groundwater?
Yes, reducing the competition over really over... Very oversubscribed water in the basin. And so that... And that's the... It's that imported supply into the basin that has allowed for those two things that I mentioned earlier, for, we're hoping, less groundwater use that depletes the limited surface supplies and is also the basis for the pueblos to settle the case and agree to limit their priority causes, because they're getting 2,500 acre feet of water out of this federally built water system. Let's see. Now, with respect to... How did we get here? The AMIT settlement and the Abeta settlement were moving forward at about the same time settlement discussion started, you know, around 2000. Started moving forward. Started actually getting some steam in both settlements around 2003, 2004. And by 2006, both cases had proposed settlement agreements that the local parties, the pueblos and the state of New Mexico were amenable to, and we needed Congress to sign off on them. And so they... We went together and started talking to our congressional delegation. And Senator Bingaman at the time said that he was not going to introduce the legislation until we had identified the water sources that we said we needed for our settlement. And at the time, there was nearly 3,000 acre feet of water, 2990, of San Juan Chama water that had been informally designated by the Bureau of Reclamation for Taos Pueblo. And there wasn't any for the four pueblos in the Puaki Basin. And the Puaki Basin was about 1,000 acre feet short. We had acquired some water rights, but we didn't have enough to meet the terms of the settlement. The pueblos were insisting on being able to divert 2,500 acre feet of new water from the Rio Grande. And so there started to be some tension between the pueblos, because the four AMIT pueblos were saying, "Why is Taos Pueblo getting all this San Juan Chama water? We should get some of it. We should get at least 1,000 acre feet." And so Bingaman said, "Well, fine. You guys sort it out. I'm not going to introduce the bill until you sort it out." And so we had a meeting in Santa Fe. I think it was on June 11. It was... It might have been June 10. Anyway, it was right around the date of this paper that's up there. And there was... We met at the state engineer office, and there was one room crowded full of representatives from the Puaki Basin, and there was another room crowded with representatives from Taos Valley and the Abeta settlement parties. We had three mediators. We had Bill Hume from the Governor Richardson's office. We had Judge Nelson, who was the mediator in the AMIT case, an Arizona judge, and Pam Williams, who is the Department of Interior official in charge of Indian water rights. And they kind of did some shuttle diplomacy back and forth, trying to resolve this. And during those negotiations, we offered the... All of the Top of the World rights to the Taos parties. I remember Peter Chestnut, the lawyer for San El de Fonsol Pueblo, saying, "You know, in a lot of ways, this doesn't make sense, because you're wanting San Juan Chama water that doesn't even run through Taos County. It comes down the Chama, and it goes right by San El de Fonsol Pueblo. And we've got these water rights up in Taos County that we'll use for our settlement, but we would rather trade you. Why don't you take the water rights that are in Taos County, and we'll take the water rights that don't run through Taos County and run right by where our point of diversion is?" And they wouldn't agree to that. I think mainly because Taos Pueblo, I think, saw that they could... That the contract water maybe had more value to them. And so the way it worked out is we ended up... There was some compromise. So the AMIT parties, pueblos, did get 369 acre feet of the 2990. So that's paragraph two up there. And the Taos parties, Taos Abeta parties, went down, so that they... Their 2990 went down a little bit, but they still ended up with, you know, the lion's share, as Chris described.
Excuse me. Are there any representatives from the Abeta settlement in the room? But I mean, any representative from the Abeta settlement itself?
You mean that negotiated for the Abeta settlement?
Yeah.
That's what you're asking for?
You, you were involved in? Did you have a question, Ron, pertaining to that or?
Well, we're, we're talking about a negotiation and people who have negotiated for this Taos County, and they're not here.
They're not here. And, you know, this was some time ago. Um, this, this document wasn't signed. This was more of a political document. I mean, it's not signed. I mean, you'll notice that the, you know, we were concerned about the fact that, well, we, you know, we ended up with the, the rights from Taos County. We would have rather had the San Juan Chama rights. We were concerned about a protest. Uh, the, there was a provision here that says that the Abeta parties would not protest a transfer because they're, you know, the, the resolution of this and how these water rights got parsed out, they were part of. Uh, but you know, this is a political document, um, no one signed it. This was something we needed to go forward in, in Congress, but that's, and you know, I couldn't tell you who was in, all the people who were in which rooms, maybe I could dig that out, but this was how it got resolved and it went forward and.
But we assumed it was approved by all parties?
It was everyone who was there. Now, I, I remember, I believe, you know, Fred Waltz was there, who no, no longer is alive. I believe Palamon Martinez was there. I, I, not positive. Um, we've, we had a number of meetings, uh, but there were, there was a big room full of people from both settlements, you know, there. Um, and I, I'm not trying to hold anyone to this. I'm not, you know, this wasn't a sign, this isn't like an enforceable legal document. This is more of a, just a historical document. But I think it's helpful to understand kind of how we got here and how these two settlements kind of proceeded together and how they worked together on, on the water supply. And really, the Taos settlement ended up with the preferable water supply from our standpoint. And, um, and that's, that's how we ended up.
Well, Mr. Uten, I, I appreciate that and appreciate that, that we didn't know much about that negotiation. A lot of these things come out in due time and obviously this was the time that that came out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya, did you have another question?
Well, maybe I should reserve my question for the hydrologist.
Okay. Gloriana?
Recently, the top of the world land was bought and water rights were leased from the state engineer's office. Where do these water rights from the state engineer's office come from? Are these the ones from the top of the world itself or where? They paid $35,000 for that lease.
Good afternoon, afternoon, committee members, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm Claudia Borcher at Santa Fe County Utilities. Um, so, uh, my, my current understanding is that the, um, that the property has not closed yet, but that the Heelys have, um, they're under contract to buy the top of the world farm. Um, part of that agreement also includes a lease for them for the 611 acre feet. It's a year-to-year lease. Um, they are buying that for $30,000 a year and it is up to Santa Fe County to decide annually what amount of that 611 to lease. And, um, as was brought up earlier, part of the determination of, um, how much of that 611 to lease annually will depend on the timing at which the Rio Grande, um, recovers that water and is available down at the San El Alfonso and the need for that water supply by the, the regional water system in the Pawaki to Tsukinambe Basin. So, um, so I'm, I'm not quite, I understand your, your question, uh, committee member in terms of the Office of the State Engineer will need to approve that lease and we will file an application for a leaseback of that water right to the farm, um, because right now, our application for that 611 is in for it to be transferred to San El Alfonso on a permanent basin basis. And so we will have to file an application with the Office of the Engineer to have that water leased back from its future move to location at San I, back up again to be used at the farm. So the Office of the Engineer acts as the agency that makes sure that the system's kept whole, that there's no double dipping and that the water right lease couldn't be used in one place and not in the other and not used in both places simultaneously. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, but in other words, in order, in order to water the farm at top of the world, they would be pumping some water out of one of those wells, right?
Um, committee member, yes. Um, they will, they, the, um, that whole portfolio of the 1,700 acre feet can only be used in one place or another. And so the, um, the, the applications assure and the Office of the Engineer assures that it's only used in one place or the other, not both. And so the, um, the 611 acre feet that the county owns that can be leased back for the top of the world to continue irrigating in the short term is not needed. I mean, the project won't, um, be completed until 2024 more or less. And, um, and even before, in, at that time, there's a lot of other water supply sources that can be used for the first amount of water supply needed by the system. So it's not, you know, until, until some more, until we get further along and know about the, the, the individuals that choose to hook up to the system, we won't know very much about the demand, but most of the demand will come on over time. And in the meantime, those water rights could be used to help irrigate the, the land that the Heelys are planning to buy.
So they'll be transferred back?
Um, they'll be leased back for use.
I know, but they'll be transferred back to subsurface?
Um, uh, committee member, Michael, yes. So they, they'll, the, um, the application that, that is of subject here today will be to move them to the San Alfonso and.
Surface.
To the surface water diversion, exactly. And, and in the meantime, um, you can, you, you can do year-to-year leases or the application of the state engineer will allow some of it to be leased back, um, at its original point of use. You know, the, that happens, um, that happens actually frequently, especially in agricultural water rights, where, um, you can move them to one place, but until they're needed in their new place, they can still be used in the old place. So that's, that's what the picture.
Subsurface to surface and subsurface to subsurface. That's not going back and forth from service, subsurface to surface and then back to subsurface.
So, committee member, the reason that, um, that, that it works in this case to go from subsurface to surface and back again is because of the strong interconnection between these, so the, the groundwater that's being pumped, that would be pumped at the top of the world farms intercepts water that would be reaching the surface water. So de facto, with some lag time, is the equivalent to surface water. That's why, um, is this hydrologically, it's allowed by the state engineer because there is a true hydrogeologic connection between the water that's being pumped at the groundwater and the water that ends up in the Rio Grande and then flows down and is diverted to surface water.
And if I may say something, so meanwhile, the water's still being pumped in the interim by lease, but we're still waiting the 18 years for it to show up in the river?
Um, committee member Lahearse, Lahearsey?
Yes. Excuse me, I might just be, being facetious, but that's the absurdity of the thinking here. It doesn't really work, especially when we don't have the subsurface geology well documented.
Um, I, uh, committee, uh, committee member, yes, I, I agree that we need to understand the science, um, as best we can, and I'm, I'm pleased to hear that the Bureau of Geology will be moving forward to do some more research in that matter. Um, and there have been studies been done in the past. I mean, there's a, there's a multiple studies that get, every time there's a transfer that happens, the Office of the State Engineer uses their hydrology staff to understand what they can about the hydrogeology in order to understand the system. So we have data from the 1950s, we have the, um, Office of State Engineer Hydrology, um, making their reports at the time of the lease to Questa. And so the, the, at that time, our current understanding is that, that the river makes a full recovery after the 18 years, but the majority, I think it's 80%, actually already reaches the river after four to five years. And, and as this transfer proceeds, the state engineer will once again use the best science available, as will we. It'll be a team of people who will be looking at, what do we understand about water levels, water flows, um, you know, rates of river, uh, conveyance losses in the Rio Grande to, 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 to live up to the best that we can to the hydrologic reality that when you intercept groundwater, um, that would otherwise go the Rio, the Rio Grande, and when you stop doing that, it does reach the Rio Grande, what kind of timeframe? We need to use the best science to try and figure out, what is the timeframe for the conveyance from the Ute Mountain area down to San I? And, and what is the quantity? I mean, those are all things that we, we use the best available information we have and we're committed to doing that, using the best, best information available to make this a hydrologic reality and not a hydrologic fiction.
Okay, Ron Gardner, another question?
Uh, yes, Mr. Uten, I have one more question. I'm not sure how this relates to our situation, but I heard somebody say that some of this water generates from Colorado. And so therefore, how come this water is not encumbered by the Rio Costilla Compact? And if it is, then how can it be transferred?
Maybe it would be helpful if we could put up the, the map that shows all of the river, please, uh, that one. So I, I think, you know, looking at the Rio Grande system here, almost all of it's coming from Colorado. I mean, they're, at least in this northern portion, uh, you know, as you move farther down, then obviously there's mountain front, uh, accruals to the river, both surface and groundwater coming off the San Grego de Cristos in New Mexico and coming in, uh, mostly from the east. Uh, certainly up where top of the world is, most of the water, most of it's just coming right down the Rio Grande, uh, from Colorado. Um, so we, what?
The, the water at the top of the world doesn't come from the Rio Grande, it comes from the Rio Costilla.
So, uh, what we have is a water right decree from the Red River adjudication that gives us the right to use the water there. As far as, I've never heard anyone say, uh, that that's some, the violation of any kind of compact with Colorado. Uh, we have the, the, the right to use that water there. Under New Mexico law, we can move it around as long as there, you, you comply with the hydrologic connection, you know, year by year, so that temporally, uh, the numbers match up, just the way the committee member was concerned here. So, um, I suppose the state of Colorado might come in and complain about it, but.
It, it's just a question of curiosity. Um, the surface water, just not even a mile east of the pivots, is dictated by the Rio Costilla Compact, an interstate compact. Just, I, I thought you might have some insight on why top of the world water is not hydrologically connected to that compact when it's actually hydrologically connected to that compact.
That's an interesting question. I, I haven't heard that as an issue.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, did we have some questions for the hydrologists?
I think that was the same question.
Okay, okay. Do we have any other questions from any other committee member? And, okay, I have a couple real quick ones. Uh, what is a priority date on these water rights? Is there a priority date?
We were just discussing that in the car. We, so it's, it's prior to the basin, the lower Rio Grande basin being declared, Mr. Chairman? Uh, and that was declared in 1956. So I, I think that the date that was provided in the decree that I mentioned a minute ago was 1956. I, I seem to recall that the first irrigation was initiated there in 52. So I'm not positive about that, but the, the date is mid 50s, uh, 1956 or slightly prior to that.
Another question I have is, um, if these water rights were transferred, what would happen to those wells that currently exist on the top of the world? Would they be abandoned? Would they be pulled out?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, unless they were available for lease for some additional irrigation, the state engineer requires that they be plugged, I believe, and capped, uh, so that they're, to avoid contamination. I think that's a, and probably some of our folks over here know better. Would they be plugged and capped? You know, so that they, if they're not going to be used, you don't want them to be a conduit for contamination. So, uh, that would be a requirement.
Okay, yeah, Ron, you have another?
If they retired those wells, would there be anything stopping somebody buying water rights on the Rio Costilla and transferring to that well and then using that well for, using that water for a second time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Gardner, I think, um, if there was another water right that someone wanted to move in there, I think they could, as long as they meet the state engineer requirements that they be connected and that actually be from the same source. I, my understanding is the Heelys may be looking at trying to transfer in some water rights there.
I ain't some.
Send the paper.
Okay, then, are there any other questions or anything else we have further from the applicants? If not, then at this point, it would open the hearing for public input. And so, uh, anyone that has a question, uh, you can ask a question. The applicants would have an opportunity after the whole process to answer them. Uh, come up, you have three-minute limit, keep it pertinent, uh, related to this particular transfer. So yeah, I saw one hand back there. Come on up and, uh, introduce yourself, give us your, come on up to the speaker if you could. Yes, please.
I think I can talk louder now.
It has to be recorded, sir, so we need your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Johnny Mascareñas and I live approximately one mile from the top of the world. I was born and raised there. And I'm a farmer and a construction man. I lived there all my life. And my question to you guys is, are you going to distract the water through, from the wells to the Rio Grande? Who wants to answer that?
Distract it.
Yeah, run the wells, put in the Rio Grande?
No, we just stop pumping the wells.
You're just stopping using the well. What happens to the water that they're putting right now in the dirt and keeping that aquifer up? That's my question, no? When you, you guys get the water supposedly out of the Rio Grande, see, the Rio Grande's a lot deeper than the top of the world, so I don't see water running uphill. So you're not getting fed from the Rio Grande into the Rio Costilla. And I'm a, uh, water user from the Rio Costilla. But in the same token, I've got six, seven wells there in the ranch. And, uh, what happens to my wells when you guys extract that water? Approximately, they're probably from 60 to 100 feet deep. If the water table goes down, what happens to us? Our farm and everything? I, I want you guys to explain that to the public over here so they kind of understand what's happening, no? This is all new to us.
Is, is that the only question you had, Mr. President? Okay, that, uh, Mr. Uten, uh, would you like to respond?
Sir, so the, um, it's, uh, Mr. Mascareñas, sorry. Um, the, when the well, when the wells on the top of the world farms are not pumped anymore, the water level should come up, which should actually help the ability of your wells to distract, to extract their water for, for your farming purposes.
Okay, other questions from the, from the audience? I see a hand, come on up.
Uh, my name is Billy V. Hill. Uh, I'm from Costilla and I'm the current chairman of the Board of the Rio Costilla Cooperative Livestock Association. Uh, we own a 15,000 acre reservoir above the, these wells here in, uh, the Costilla Creek. Uh, my question is, how are they going to gauge how much water that you're actually getting out of this?
Billy V. Hill, uh, the, water that is pumped at the top of the world is measured, is metered by the wells. The water that, uh, that comes back to the river after the pumping stops, that is not measured. So it has to be modeled by, and that's what the state engineer has done, uh, created a model, model that estimates how fast the, the river recovers and how fully it recovers. So if you stop pumping 100 acre feet a year, then, you know, after five years, the river will come back 80 acre feet and after 18 years, it'll come back a whole hundred. But it's not measured at the river, it's, it's modeled.
So, so this is really a, an imaginary model that they've done, it's not from actual data. This is not data that they've collected to say that when you stop pumping, this much water will go into the Rio Grande. water will go into the Rio Grande. And they have no way of gauging it downstream to say that this is how much we're gaining or not gaining, right? They have a model that they use, probably some software, probably has no data that they actually collected to tell them this, this scenario or to cover this.
Well, I wouldn't quite go that far. They're not measuring it, but when they make a model, they base it on, on data. And there is a, there is a lot of data in that area, and mainly, they would use water level data. They have an idea of where the water table is, and they can tell what direction the water is flowing, and the steepness of the water table. That tells them how fast it's going, how quickly it would go back to the river. So it's not measured at the river. It'd be very hard, and actually, this amount of water is pretty small compared to the entire river flow. But they, they do have a lot of data that goes into their, into the model, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. V. Hill. Okay, anyone else, come on up.
Hello, my name is Gonzalo Gallegos, and I have a question for Santa Fe County. I live in Sunshine Valley. There's a lot of people who live there, and they live off that same aquifer that you're going to be pumping out of. But my understanding is that Santa Fe bought these water rights for Santa Fe, but you brought the Pueblos in to be able to cross these waters from Pohque to Santa Fe. Is that right? You included the Pueblos for this reason? Because you could not cross these water rights that you bought to Santa Fe because in Pohque there's a stop there? Is that right? Huh? No? That's my understanding, and that you tried to run them through Chama County, and you couldn't run them through Chama because of the same reason. But all in all, you offered water to the Pueblos in return to buy water back from them to transfer to Santa Fe. Are you sure? Why would you buy water?
Okay, is that your full question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you want to respond now, go ahead.
I'd like to make two responses. First of all, Mr. Gallegos, with respect to water users in the Sunshine Valley, just want to make it clear, we're not, our proposal isn't to pump more water out of the Sunshine Valley, it's to stop pumping water. So...
How can you do that if you're transferring?
We're just going to let it flow down the river.
Yeah, but what about our, prefer that you...
We would stop pumping out of it. That's our proposal, is to stop pumping. We will lease back, we, about a third of the old farm is still in production. Santa Fe County has a lease with the Heelys to provide water from, on a year-to-year basis with them to continue pumping. But over time, as the water is needed for the water system in the Pohque Valley, that pumping would stop. So our proposal is that the pumping would discontinue, it would stop.
Well, you've been leasing the top of the world farms. Two farmers, they have been using six wells, six circles, and you have not mentioned that to the people. You have been pumping water there all this time. And you did have somebody leasing this farm from you guys, dropped at a lease that was still short. And you sold, and I'm understanding that you sold them dry land, not water rights.
That's correct.
So how can you be telling us that you're, they're going to be pumping water?
They, there are two things happening, and maybe, could we put up the map of the top of the world? Farmer, I can do it. So just to be clear, and I think Mr. Benet was trying to explain this, so the northern, about two-thirds...
The other way.
Yeah, so the northern two-thirds, which are mostly the, the blue crosshatch circles, those have not been, the irrigation started slowing down on those a while ago. I don't, I think maybe the early '90s, mid-'90s was the last time.
They did that because they removed the sprinkler systems from them, but they weren't being used.
They certainly weren't, yeah. So it's been a while since those northern blue circles have had any irrigation. For, Mr. Gallegos is correct, over the last, I would say, eight years or so, there has been active irrigation in the southern portion, mainly where the red is. It's not, it's not quite configured like that. The circles are a little smaller, but that's where the irrigation is. It's about 600 acres. And Santa Fe County continued the leasing of the land for the last, oh, about six years that was, that was started by the predecessor who owned that.
Actually, the reason you have six circles and you re-herigate enough of those, because the person that you leased the land to, they set up the circles in exchange for the use of the circles. Then they gave up the leases, because I was the one to lease the place, I live right next door.
And that may have happened even before Santa Fe County purchased those.
Well, actually, when you purchased them, that's when they started happening.
So now the Heelys are about to own the land, but we didn't sell any water rights to them. The water rights are severed from this land. The United States has severed theirs. Santa Fe Counties are about to be severed, meaning there are two different owners. The Heelys are interested in, I think, managing that land, perhaps with less water, I think is my understanding of what they plan to do. In the meantime, Santa Fe County has agreed to lease water to them, basically on a year-to-year basis, for, again, the southern, about third of this, where those red circles are. Eventually, though, that water will be needed for the Pohque Basin, and it's probably not going to be all at once. It could be that, that the 600 acres may go down to 500, and may go down to 400, for the same reason, Mr. Harris is asking about the timing of that, to manage the timing, because there is a delay. So that would have to be managed, so that the...
So you're answering my question by telling me, okay, is getting this water? Why were they asking for this water?
All right, so this, could we put the, that map right there back on?
Okay.
All right, so the water would be transferred to a regional water system that would provide water to this area in blue.
I see it, yeah.
And the city of Santa Fe is, is south, it's down in the white area there below. So the waters, the, Santa Fe County is part of the regional water system, agreed it would go and get water rights for the non-Pueblo water users. So that's what this supply would, would be for.
Okay, see another hand back there, question? I, I had the one right behind, and then you're next, after the young lady back. Go ahead, yes, that's your question.
Good morning, good afternoon. A little shorter here. My name's Rachel Khan, I'm the acting director of Amigos Bravos, who are statewide water conservation organization. And so my question, I guess I have a lot of questions, but the one I'm going to ask is, what, what is the withdrawal schedule going to be down into Suke? What time of year? I'm worried about the impacts of, to the river downstream. From my understanding, this water is pretty much already in the river, so we, the river's been benefiting from that water for a number of years now, more and more every year, I guess, as, as the aquifer recovers and more water gets to the river. What time of year, what is the schedule for taking the water out of the river, and how would that impact the Rio Grande downstream?
Ms. Khan, so the, the utility will be completed in stages, and let's see, so we have the map there. And so if you can imagine that initially, there'll be a diversion built, and the first area that serves San Elfonso Pueblo will be built, as well as some neighboring, neighboring county areas like El Rancho. And, and so when that, when that portion gets completed, the, the river will, will begin to divert from the river, the demand for that section, so that may be, I don't know, I'm guessing between 500 to 800 acre feet. So, and that will be potable water use for the residents of San Elfonso Pueblo, as well as the neighbors in Santa Fe County. And so that we diverted on a kind of a schedule that's common for utilities, in the sense that during the first few months of the year, like where we are now, it's primarily for indoor use. And then as people start to irrigate their gardens or their landscaping, then it increases to the peak, peak use being the summer months, and then it drops down again in the winter months. And then, so that would be in the first couple of years, then as, as the Bureau of Reclamation continues to build the system into Pohque, into Numbay, and then up towards Pohque, I mean, towards Tsukki, which will be completed, slated to be completed in 2025, then that eight, you know, 500 to 800 acre feet will expand to the demand, not only of the people who sign up for the system by 2024, but also as the, the empty lots that exist in the area, as people decide to build homes, they're required to hook up to that utility. So the whole system has a total capacity of 4,000 acre feet, and because it is all potable, you know, demand, the, the use of that water will continue to follow that, follow that kind of bell-shaped curve, where the use is less in the wintertime and more in the summertime.
Just a quick follow-up, so the river will, you'll be taking more water out of the river during the time of the year when it's typically, the river needs it the most. And so I'm seeing quite a large impact on the, on the riparian and aquatic values of the Rio Grande downstream. Not upstream here, but downstream from, from Pohque.
So, Ms. Khan, there's a couple of things to consider there, which is that, right now, the majority of the water in the state, including the majority of the water that the Rio Grande uses, goes to irrigation uses. So this is actually kind of a flattening of the curve. Anytime you take water out of irrigation and you put it to potable use, and you're going to use water during those winter, winter months, and actually flatten that curve, then you don't actually do when, when you're, when you're using it for irrigation. So, I mean, there's also, there's also the fact of the San Juan Chama water, since, let's see, about a third of this water is San Juan Chama water, is that right? About, a little bit over a third is San Juan Chama water. That water has been variously used, also currently, so Bureau of Reclamation has been leasing that water for downstream purposes, and, and actually have been storing it too. So there is no consistent pattern by which that water has been in the river. It's been used specifically to address certain, certain issues, specifically the silvery minnow, supplemental water. And so it's, it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison to say that this water now being used in a different way will actually directly impact the way the Rio Grande has been operated thus far.
Thank you. And there's, you had the next one? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jerome Lucero, I'm a commissioner on the Spring Ditch, and I'm also a water user from the Town of Taos, mutual, or the domestic system from the Town of Taos. I'd just like to make a couple of statements. First of all, you were asking for a representative of the Abeta Water Settlement, and there's nobody here. But the person that was involved with negotiating that agreement was pretty much Palamon Martinez, and, and he's been with the ditches for a long time. But just for the record, I think that he is no longer having anything to do with the ditch, and I'll just let that sit with you as to why he's no longer a member of that ditch, at least in a management capacity. The Spring Ditch is the only ditch of, one of 55, that is not signatory to the Abeta Water Settlement. And it's because of item number, that, item number four, that was passed out in that handout that said that you have to, if you sign that agreement, you hold all the other principles harmless. And we didn't want to do that, because we're in litigation with the Town of Taos at this point. But that's all I will say to you about that. And I have two questions, basically, for you, and I hope that this committee will recommend to the county commission, but what they do, you know, I've seen some pretty disturbing things there as a result of what you recommended to them. I don't know if it's you specifically, your committee members, but you recommended that they protest the Gallagher Ranch transfer, and then the county commission voted against it, or to overturn your thing. So I applaud you if you stand up and protect me as a consumer of water in Taos and Taos County. The two questions I have is, it seems to me like we're putting the cart before the horse here. Let the Abeta Water Settlement, let the judge issue her final ruling on things before you do anything. Once Judge Vasquez rules or issues her finding, and maybe I'm very optimistic that she will do the right thing. The hearing examiner or the special master's not going to do the right thing, but maybe the judge will. So why not wait until that's done? And the last question I have for you is, am I going to be relegated as, as a result of all of these water transfers that you guys are proposing? Am I going to be relegated to getting my water for my consumptive use and for irrigation of my garden to this? Is that the only way I'm going to get water in Taos County? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Your first question was on the Abeta settlement, of course, this is top of the water. The other one, I don't know if anyone wants to respond. Go ahead.
Mr. Lucero, that, that was very helpful to hear, though. You know, at this point in time, it would be very helpful for this water advisory board to be assigned a liaison from the Abeta, so that these things can be explained to us, because quite often with the Abeta, it's been explained to us in public forums rather than in due diligence.
I, I, I'm just one member...
I understand that, but we have no one here...
...of one ditch. But what I say to you is, all we can do is look at what's happened to Mr. Martinez. You know, obviously, Mr., the lawyer that was for the TVA, I forget his name. Fred Walz, he's gone. He, you know, can't do anything about that. But I think the fact that Mr. Martinez is no longer associated with it speaks volumes about what people think about what he did in negotiating this deal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lucero. And there were some other hands over here. Were you the only one? Yeah, you're...
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Vigil. I represent the San Francisco de Pauda Ditch, which is one of the lowest ditches in Taos County, it's in lower ranchitos, fed by the Rio Pueblo, from the Taos Pueblo. Coming to us in the future, they've already told us, they're going to be putting meters in our head, in our diversion points, and they're going to start registering how much water goes through there. And then once we get our acre feet, they're going to shut it, we can't use it anymore. In times of drought, when there is no water, it's meaningless to have a meter or anything if you can't irrigate, because there's no water in the river. But one thing we have learned as a ditch association, at the bottom of the line, is that the person on top, the first person to divert the water, is the one that gets the water. And they get as much as they want. And when they're done, then they let it go down. Same thing for the Pueblo. The Pueblo, once they've run it through all their lands and just let it run, not even irrigate, then what's left, that's what we get. Okay? So the state has this beautiful idea about a special masters that's going to go in there and be fair, and he's going to tell the guy upstream, let the water go, you've used it enough, the guy below needs it. And there's this friendship among ditches, that we're all going to share the water, right? This concept, that hey, in times of drought, I'm going to be your neighbor, and I'm going to let you irrigate. But the guy upstream is the one that's going to get the water first. We have a priority date of 1750. That's, that speaks volumes. That's that speaks volumes. Seventeen fifty, that's when the first settlers came out of the Pueblo because the Comanche and Apache raids debated down, the cavalry came in, kind of brought them down, people came out and settled. And Lower Ranchitos and Upper Ranchitos were the two first areas to be settled because it's the valley, it's where all the greenery was. Now, public welfare, okay, the 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 benefit of Taos County. We got ourselves into a mess in the year of abundance of water when the state engineer went and sold water to Texas. We have so much water, we're going to sell you some. And then we get into a drought, and what do we do? Tell Texas, we're not going to give you that much water anymore. We don't have it. And what does Texas do? They sue us for it. We've already developed, we've already made cities based on the water you sold us. So now we got to give it to them. It's like the Milagro Beanfield War all over again. The water's flowing right in front of your lot, but you can't put the shovel to it. You can't divert it because it's not yours. They sold it to somebody else. And we're doing the same thing with what we're doing here with this transfer to Santa Fe. Santa Fe has good intentions of developing on that water, making their city bigger, getting water for them at our expense. Because when it's drought time here, that our aquifers go down, that our ditches go down, we're not going to have any water. But if we allow it to go to Santa Fe, we can't stop it. We can't divert the little bit that's there for our products.
Mr. Vigil, do you have a specific question?
No, these are comments. These are just comments that I'm making, okay? It was my understanding that you could not transfer water from one water basin to another. And when Lorale bought the top of the world farm and sold Santa Fe the water rights, the court stepped in and said, you can't transfer water from water basin to another. But just like they said about a cart in front of the horse, once the water is sold, then they use that as a basis for changing the law.
Okay, so your question is, can water be transferred from one basin to another?
No, it it can be transferred from one basin to another. We're we're justifying it now in this meeting by them asking after they buy it to transfer it. We're we're justifying it, and that shouldn't be the case for us at all.
Who has the authority to transfer the water?
The courts.
Okay, before that, who has the authority?
Nobody. The water stays where it's at.
What about the state engineer's office?
State engineer is not in any position to to uh, they go by what the courts say, just like your water right. State engineer can't take your water right away.
Okay, is that your question then? Because I'll let applicants, if they so desire, respond to that. If water can be transferred from one basin to another, is that your question? Because we have a we have a timeline.
Yeah, yeah, that's a question. That's a question there.
Okay. Do you care to respond to that?
Mr. Vigil, um, I um, I there are, there's, I agree with you, both state law and court law that dictates those kinds of questions. And I think that what the office of the engineer, the uh, the laws they look to, the rules and regulations are, is there hydrologic connectivity connectivity between the water, the move from and the move to location? I think they use that basis to decide on an individual case by case basis whether water can be transferred. And I and I think we believe that in this case, and I think the some of the past rulings of the engineer is that there is water connectivity in this case.
Okay, um, just one last comment then. Water that is up in the farm right now, in thousand uh, hundred foot, thousand foot wells, whatever, down here in Taos, that becomes our aquifer, that water that's up there right now. Now, when you close those wells and everything, they say, well, then it should provide water for everybody else on down the road because the wells aren't pumping anymore. But we can't touch that water because it's been transferred by somebody else. It's that Milagro Beanfield War effect. We cannot transfer that water. We cannot put the shovel in and use it because it's not ours. It belongs to Santa Fe. So it will affect our aquifer here, it will affect our surface water here. Right now, the Rio Grande is down, it's lost its water, it continues to go down. The San Juan Chama project isn't working that well. Santa Fe, uh, Colorado is keeping most of that water. We have less water, less water, less water. If you give this water away now and allow this, you're just hurting our future.
Thank you, Mr. Vigil. Other questions or comments? Uh, let's see, let's go over here to this gentleman with the white hat.
My name is Charlie Lopez. I'd like to to ask, when you talk about buying water rights, who do you pay this money to? Who gets this money? So that's that's that makes it pretty uh, pretty uh, nice for the person that owns the water rights, that owns the wells, because uh, he has the liberty to uh, to negotiate water that belongs to a county, to us, to basically the county. And you go and buy it, buy it from him, that makes that makes him pretty rich all the So why does the, if he's, if they stole that, why why is this meeting going on with with these people?
You can, uh, go ahead.
Order to move a water right, Mr. Lopez, you have to get a permit from the state engineer, and the permit, the state engineer looks at three things. So if if you didn't move the water right, let's say that you just wanted to continue the use where it is, then you just, it's a willing buyer, willing seller, you have a closing, you take over their property and continue what they were doing, and it's not an issue. It's when you want to move the location that it becomes more than just a willing buyer, willing seller issue, because if you move the point of diversion, you could affect other people. And so the state engineer requires, even though you, the the buyer and the seller have come to agreement, that there be notice and that the public have an opportunity to weigh in and say one of three things, that the change would impair them. So like if you, let's say you were lower down on a stream system and you moved up above someone else, so now your point of diversion is above them, they would have a chance to come in and say, no, you can't do that, that's going to impair me. So the first one's impairment. Or let's say if you had a well, if you move your well closer to someone else's well and it started interfering with their well, they could object to that and say that could impair me. And then in nineteen eighty-five, the state legislature, this was before Ron's time, but he knows about what the legislature does, the legislature added two more criteria, and they are conservation and public welfare of the state of New Mexico. And so if you're trying to change a use, the applicant has to show that the new use will apply proper principles of conservation of water, it won't be a wasteful change. And then the third one is that that the use must be consistent with public welfare, the proposed use must be consistent with public welfare within the state of New Mexico. So if someone doesn't like the change of use, they have an opportunity to protest and and say that they don't like what's being proposed for any one of those three or combination or all of them. They feel that they would be affected by it. So that's why we're here.
No, uh, any change is going to affect anything on the, I mean, it even if I, if you, even if you gave five gallons away, it's still going to affect, right? I mean, you can't, you can't just, how much water do you have to sell to make it, to make it that is going to affect the community?
So what what we're doing.
If, in other words, if I wanted to sell my water rights, was that uh, point five acres, uh, would I have to come against this committee and say, well, you know, we're going to sell this point five? In other words, what I'm trying to say is that that uh, that the state has, the state has gotten involved in this thing so bad that, and the and the federal government, that you guys are controlling waters that were rightfully to the people of this county, of 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 New Mexico.
Okay, Ron Gardner has a response.
Mr. Lucero, I appreciate your testimony, and I think it's a very difficult thing to express, but you're you're right, the the seller benefits wholly. Now, the transfer is going to have effects throughout the community. That's why we have a public welfare statement. So while it's, you know, the the seller's right to sell that, it's also the right of other water users and the county, local government to protest that transfer for the impacts that it has for the public welfare.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, other, uh, one back there in the corner?
Stevens Hall. It seems to me that this proposal and this entire conversation is is a juggling act. It's a house of cards. If I remember correctly, the attorney from Santa Fe said that the reason that the Santa Fe County entered into this conversation was their concern over preserving traditional agricultural and asechia uses. And at another time, somebody said there, in response to another question, there were thirty-five hundred wells in Pawaki, Tsukki, Numbay Basin, thirty-five hundred private wells. But there, but none of these owners will be required, the terms are encouraged, they'll be offering incentives, um, to not use their wells to hook up to a system, a system that will draw from the water that's supposedly coming from the top of the world, flowing down the river, and then to be withdrawn in near San El de Fonzo, El de Fonzo Pueblo. Again, encouraged, but not required. And the idea is that by hopefully non-use of these wells, that the water table will remain or or even rise and allow um, the asechia use. Right, right there, it's not, no requirements, we just hope. This is, this is a promise of a of a futurologist, so to speak. It was also said, and I don't know her association, but she said that eighty percent of the eighteen year um, renewal occurs in the first four to five years. And if I under, if I remember correctly, these wells have been shut down for a number of years. Some of them, I believe, it was said in the nineties, some in the mid-two thousands. So there you go. There's eighty percent of your water, it's already there. The question was raised, are you not already, are you not continuing to withdraw, are you not making a decision now to withdraw water that's already there? You're not adding any new water, the water's already in the system. And on top of all of this, thirty-six hundred acre feet of of water, which seems to be a prime driver, that's the water from the San Juan Chama project, seven hundred and ten feet and twenty-nine hundred and ninety feet, is cross-basin transfer. Not only cross-basin, it is cross-divide. It is coming across the continental divide, the United States. The water is pumped through these huge tunnels to get here, to to come to to flow into on the eastern side of the continental divide, coming off the western side of the continental divide into the eastern side of the continental divide. The idea that this water is flowing somehow, you know, not flowing through Taos County, but flowing through another county, I find a bit preposterous. That that truly is creation of a water right, a paper water right, that there is no right for that water to be on this side of the mountain, so to speak. And a good portion of this deal is talking about these thirty-six hundred acre feet of water that are contracted for, that come from across the continental divide. This, at some point, this conversation needs to stop, and we need as communities to rethink the whole idea of water use and 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 how it's appropriated. The idea also, I believe, is that some of this water, six hundred some acre feet, if I'm not mistaken, will be used by Santa Fe County to support development in their county. So you're taking water, as Mr. Gardner said, what could be used here to help question, address questions of development here and transferring it to Santa Fe County.
Is that your question then?
Um, like, just a a final comment. And the idea that we can rely on the the state engineer to enforce rules and regulations to monitor wells, that's a load of hooey. The 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 state engineer is not required, in many instances of development, to actually monitor the well use. The owner voluntarily supplies that information.
Okay, do you have a specific question?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I did see one other hand, Ms.
Thank you, members of the board. My name's Antonio Trujillo. I live within the Red River Hydrological Survey, and I'm no stranger to water use and its machinations in northern New Mexico. I have a question about the wells. I remember years ago, there was a well placed very close to the river in in on the on the Red River Canyon that had to do with mining. And it made the river drop a lot, and eventually the people were able to bring that to to the, to the side of the powers that could be, and 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 it was eliminated. The river was restored its its elevation. When, when these wells, if this transfer goes through, and these wells are are, they stop from from being pumped, is there uh, is there like an inspection that will occur in in and what materials would be used? How long it'll take for 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 the aquifer to recharge will, which will affect the the recharge of the river? This time sequence affecting the the time that they can use it downstream, are all those questions? I I know all of you asked them, but I didn't get any clear answers from anyone as to whether there is a scheme that that works all that. You you all seem to be working with very properly as to safeguard any uh, any actions that would be ill to the county. But I'd never really got an idea that that there was a clear answer as to a lot of those I'm I'm also confused by the the terms, pueblo and non-pueblo users and stuff like that. And to me, it's just like, uh, it's it's just a word, another word for village, like God and Deus and stuff like that. And we're all, we all get to use it, we are going to be affected by it. So you guys are are putting this through 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 a good mill, and I just hope that that you you come out with with the, with the best outcome for the common good.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Would you like to further address that, further clarify what will happen to the wells? Is there a definite plan in place?
Mr. Trujillo, um, so the um, the, you know, should the transfer go through, the application will have requirements on the move from location and will require certain kind of reporting requirements that would would assure that the water is not being used. There could be plugging, abandoning of wells if they're, if they're not being used with another water supply. They often use aerial photography to check to make sure that no irrigation has happened on lands that have been dried up. And they they often send out um, the staff of the office and state engineer to assure that the land that is not supposed to be irrigated is being irrigated. I don't know if that answers the question?
Oh, I don't know. He has a follow up.
Actually, all those questions, I can see that by by just getting on a rigid line. But my question was, if they, if they, if they stop using a well, will the, will the casing be pulled out? What materials will be used to to, will you be using cottonseed hulls and cement, or will you be capping them with? How will you ensure that that the same amount of material that came out on that 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 size hole by foot or 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 square, square foot of material gets put back in into the right position so that if you have any loss of 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 water from 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 one elevation to another one, because it's been, it's a perforation that's been made, and and if you want to eliminate any any possibility of a sinkhole being developed or or contamination from different water source to the river, what, how do you check that? And will those those be be made public?
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not answer your question the first time. So um, the there are rules and regs that are adopted by the state engineer regarding the plugging and abandoning of wells, and you do not pull the casing out of the ground. They require that you pour concrete down into the casing, and so that They require that you pour concrete down into the casing, and so that is how a well gets plugged. And so that would prevent water from the surface, or contamination from the surface, reaching down into the well and contaminating the aquifer. I believe what you also have a question about is whether water can continue, so water from one formation could theoretically continue to travel through the outside of the casing, the annulus is called, down into other formations. So, and that interconnection exists right now, with the fact that that well there is there now, and it would be true for any well that possibly provides interconnection and draws water from multiple layers of water. So the plugging of a well will actually decrease the ability of one aquifer to contaminate another, or to have flow going from one to the other. Contamination not meaning introducing of an unwanted substance. And it will also decrease the ability of surface water contamination, from surface contamination of any kind, reaching the aquifer. So in whole, plugging of a well actually decreases the vulnerability of the aquifer.
Ron, go ahead and ask.
Claudia, is it the intention of Santa Fe County to plug those wells, or not plug those wells?
It will, the wells will no longer be Santa Fe County's, they belong to the Heelys, and it'll depend on what the state engineer requires of those wells with respect to, to the transfers, and what the intentions are of the Heelys with respect to those wells.
Thank you.
As far as I understand, the state engineer is like a record-keeping office. It's not enforcement. I think, my question to the board is, is it within your power to, because she touched on what I was thinking, that the water does travel on the outside of the casing, not just within it. So, because there was this man who had a well in that area, who could hear the water going, but his wall was dry. He perforated the casing, and his water, he was able to pump water from the well, so it was traveling outside of it, and he was able to fill it that way. So if that's happening, and it's finding its way to the river without restoring the area, because before these wells were placed, as my, my, my family, or different friends said, that the water level was three feet below the surface. As soon as these wells started happening, that stopped. The water level was deeper. And you can see that just from taking a ride between Costilla and Jaroso and all those areas. There's many, many, many farms that have, that were ruined by these wells that were made. So if, is it within your power to have the casing pulled? And to have them, and to have them, or at least make a recommendation, to have them capped in a certain way, so that it can be restored to what it was before that operation was in...
No, Mr. Trujillo probably wouldn't be within our power. We act strictly in advisory capacity, so we would make a recommendation to the commissioners to have a little bit more, carry a little bit more weight, and then it would flow on up to the state engineer's office, and so on.
Can I ask this?
Yes.
In California, at Martin Lockheed, we did this operation called Drill and Abandonment. There was multi-aquifers, okay, within one casing. And they had to literally plug, go, they had to like fill the entire well full of concrete, and then drill through the concrete, and then force pressure up with concrete. Halliburton did this, and they'd force pressure up with concrete to come into the upper screens. Okay? So they did this procedure called Drill and Abandonment, and that's how they plugged, that's how they plugged those wells, you know, and called it good. But those were dealing with multiple aquifers with screens at each, at each aquifer. But what happened was that it cross-contaminated the water tables, okay? The drilling, the original drilling cross-contaminated the wells.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. There was, I saw another question back there. Yes, come on up.
My name is Esther Garcia, I'm with the Cabresta Lake Irrigation Community Ditch Association. And I have a comment plus a question. When, they have six wells left, some of them are not being used. I remember hearing some of the people in some of the other communities, that when those wells were being used, their wells went dry. My concern is that right now, the asequias are the ones that kind of build the aquifer in those areas. And we've been in a drought. The asequias have not had the water that they need. We don't even have a second growing of alfalfa or anything, because our water just isn't there. So when they take this water, when you pump this water into the river, at the end of the day, in the future, where is that water going to come from? If we can't provide it, where is it going to come from? And I think that, you say you're going to be monitoring those wells. I don't know how they're going to monitor these wells, because the state doesn't do a good job of monitoring anything. So that would be a concern. And as to the asequias, and what effect it will have for the asequias, because right now, we don't have water. We cannot provide water for our ranchers and farmers up there. And if they are being taken, how do we survive? How do the small communities in northern New Mexico? I understand that we need development, the cities need them, but what about us, the people that live in rural communities? How do we survive?
So is your feeling that it would affect the agrarian character of that particular area?
Yes.
Have a look.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify what we're proposing. We're not proposing to pump the wells and pump the water into the river. That's not what we are proposing. We are proposing to stop pumping the wells. So the water table declines that Ms. Garcia is concerned about should actually be relieved from what we're proposing, because we would no longer be pumping from that aquifer. So I think maybe she misunderstood what we're proposing.
Okay. Okay, someone that hasn't asked a question, is there? Okay, go ahead, and then we'll get back to you.
My name's Alicia Walts, and I was just wondering if Santa Fe County has received the Bureau of Reclamation's environmental impact statement? And if so, can the public see that?
We have not yet received that impact statement yet. We will post it and provide it once we do have that. We expect, we expect it no later than 2017, I believe.
So then, can anything be done until 2017, when that EIS statement is received? Can you move forward with any of this project?
The, currently, the Bureau of Reclamation is designing the regional water system that will bring, transfer the water from Nambay, San El DuFonso, all the way up into Toluca Basin. And none of that construction will start until that EIS is prepared.
Mr. McHill? Come on up, come on up, because we need to record it. You represent an asequia association?
The Rio-Costilla Cooperative Blastock Association. I have a quick question. Since you're going to be converting that groundwater to surface water, what priority will hold? So I, one of the guys that came up here raised an interesting question. He said they're going to just have to watch that water go by. So if you have a higher priority than they do, then they are going to have to watch that water just go by.
So, I think it was Mr. V Hill?
Yeah.
Sorry, the priority would be the same. And so if someone has a water right with a more senior priority to take water, and they haven't gotten a full supply, and there's enough water in whatever water course that they can, they can take that up and get a full supply. So we, the priority stays the same. So I think, in fact, if there is less pumping and withdrawal in that area, and as a result of that, there are more local supplies, it could be that the water uses in the area will have a better supply. No one's going to tell them that you can't take up to your full supply.
And I'm not thinking just of a local area there, I'm thinking about downstream, because, you know, like you said, the groundwater has a completely different, there's groundwater, they can pump the whole limit, no matter what is going on, on the surface, right? So now, say we have a drought here, and the water that's supposed to be replenishing the Rio Grande over there isn't doing its job, you know what I mean? Because of the drought, because they're relying on the groundwater to seep into the, into the Rio Grande. So if it doesn't seep into the Rio Grande, they're still going to be getting their 1,700 acre-feet out there. And if they're still going to be getting their 1,700 acre-feet out there, then who is going to be losing? Somebody downstream.
Downstream.
Upstream.
So...
Or downstream. No, what I was saying is that people that are pulling water off the Rio Grande, if you have a priority, they have to watch it go down. And you're saying the priority will stay the same? Well, right now, if you're changing groundwater to surface water, and you're saying, well, I'm going to keep the groundwater priority, the groundwater priority is that you can get your full fill, no matter what happens on the, on the surface water.
So, could I explain that a little bit? So the state engineer administers water conjunctively. That means that, as Claudia described earlier, where surface and water, where surface and groundwater are interconnected, they're administered together. So if you're a groundwater user with a junior priority, and you are affecting surface water users with a senior priority, they can shut you down. And actually, that was our, that's the problem we had in AMIT, is the pueblos have the senior surface, and they're telling everyone else, including groundwater users, you can't take our surface water flow, because those are administered together. And so if, if we take a 1956 groundwater right, and we cease pumping it here, so that that water accrues to the Rio Grande, it still travels down the Rio Grande with a 1956 priority. So we understand that when we get, when we get to the bottom of the system, we can only take in priority. We can't, we won't be able to tell people upstream of us, who have, let's say, a 1,900 priority, that they have to let it by. They have, they have a water right for 1,900. So if there, you know, if there's someone in Velarde or Budo, and it turns out that there's a little more water running down the river, they can take up to their full supply. We can't tell them that they have to bypass a junior right. So we're taking a risk...
Right, but I guess my question is, is that you have no way of telling that you're contributing that 1,500 acre-feet to the aquifer, I mean, to the river? So if you have a drought here, and you're not contributing the 1,500 acre-feet, then you're taking out water that, that doesn't exist. You know what I mean?
So the state engineer, so our application isn't to administer all the water rights for time forward. We're seeking to move a 1956 right from a location higher in the system to lower in the system. Generally, that, people see that as beneficial. It's when you move the water upstream, and you jump over people, that then they feel they're going to be impaired. If you move the water downstream, the water has to pass other people. If it turns out that there's not enough water in the system, and there's a water master, and there's a shortage, and water rights are administered in priority, we would be one of the junior uses. And so perhaps people below us...
But right now, you have zero water in the river. You don't have any priority at all right now, because your, the priority you have is to pump it in one spot. And now what you're saying is now we're going to take that priority, put it in the river where it never was to begin with, but we want to keep our priority.
And that's because they're interconnected. So the water that we don't pump at the top of the world will go into the Rio Grande. We're not the ones that are going to decide what the quantity is. It's the state engineer, they have hydrologists, they're going to look at this, and they're going to determine, okay, if you, you have a water right to divert, pump up here at the top of the world, if you cease that, what will you be able to pump? What's the wet water? What are the actual molecules of water that will travel down there, and you can divert? And they will determine that. It's not, we don't have the power to determine. There's a state agency that's set up by state law to do that. They have a whole hydrologic bureau. They have water masters. I've heard people say they don't, they feel they're not active enough. But they are the state entity that is charged by state law with supervising and administering the water laws, and they're going to do that. So if you feel somehow that, you know, the amount of water we end up diverting, and I don't know why you would really care, since you're above us, but if you, if there is someone who's concerned about that, and it's more likely to be someone in the middle valley below us, if they're concerned that somehow we are diverting more water than we had before, they can go to the state engineer and say, they're out of priority, and they're taking more water than they should, and the state engineer should look at that. It shouldn't have any effect on you up here.
Thank you, Mr. McHill, thank you, Mr. Hunt. Okay, there's a question right here, Robin.
I'm Robin Collier, and I've been reporting on water issues for quite some time. Last year, both Chamita, which is the oldest asequia in the state, made a priority call. Las Vegas asequias made a call. The state engineer had no procedure to enforce any priority dates. They didn't even have a form. They had to make up a form. It took three months before they even took any action. Meanwhile, Chamita, of course, its growing season had passed. The idea that the state engineer is going to be able to enforce any priority dates is absurd. I recorded an hour discussion at the Senate Conservation Committee a couple weeks ago, and all the senators, both Republicans and Democrats, said, this is a total mess. The adjudication across the state, less than half of it has even been completed. There's going to be another 100 years before everything's adjudicated. There's no way that the state engineer is going to be in force any priority dates. The whole thing is a sham. We've been doing, you know, the Mott settlement, the Abeda settlement, 40 years of adjudication, thousands and millions of dollars of lawyer's fees, but the state doesn't have any way. They will never enforce these so-called priorities that they've supposedly put together here. And I beg you to think about the ridiculousness of a system where there's no plan. I would like to hear the plan of how any priority dates are going to be enforced, because you're, the only way that you, I mean, the proposal would be to shut off all the water to the cities. Do you think the cities are going to let that happen? Anyway, that's my statement.
Thank you, Ron. Would you like to respond to that? Okay, there's another question back there.
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
What is your name?
My name is Eric Salazar, and I live in Amalia. I'm a member of the RCLA. I am a member of the, I'm a paciente, I'm a rancher, and I'm a chairman of the Costilla Domestic Water System. And ladies and gentlemen, you know that money will buy anything, you know? And that's what we don't have. We don't have any money up in northern New Mexico. You know, we need somebody always from the south coming in, giving us money. You know, if we transfer this, this water rights from here, from the top of the world, somebody else is going to come in with more money. We're going to be dry, ladies and gentlemen. What I ask you, you know, I'm asking you to, not to consider transferring this water right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Salazar. Okay, okay, there's a couple more. Mark, you haven't spoken.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Agos, Mayor of Cuesta. I have a couple of comments for Santa Fe County, and I also have a question. Sometime in late October, I went up to the county commission and asked if they'd consider selling that property to the Village of Cuesta. They chose not to. They considered that it was an easier deal for them to, or most beneficial deal for them to sell it to the Heelys, because it was going to be a dry grazing operation. So you have 611 acre-feet that could be used for some of the small communities that have over-diverted over the years. Have you ever considered leasing that water to these small communities, or showing some good neighbor spirit to Taos County? Because the sale of that property was at $300 an acre foot, at $300 an acre for dry land grazing. Now, the idea is to go and let them go and get, you know, $30,000 an annual lease for them to irrigate, you know? That, the issue that I have primarily is that that's going to be 3,000 acres that are going to have any water. Every, every time these waters get transferred for... Every time these waters get transferred further down, smaller communities lose their tradition, the way of living, and 3,000 acres of dry land out there is just another way of making another dust bowl for our area. So yes, you have your benefits, just as us small communities up here have our benefits to look forward to, but it doesn't seem like, you know, you're talking water, and it's not going to get pumped. I understand that. But on the surface, we have no water up there, and they're not making water rights, and there's not any much more water coming from, to, and wherever. So if the Hillys choose to transfer water from one area to go to the top of the world, then guess what? Some, this other area gets dry again. So it's 3,000 acres of dry land that was going to be, again, put up there for nobody to touch. So, you know, I would ask that you consider looking at, before you enter any kind of lease agreement with the Hillys, that you consider the small communities that have that over-diversion that may need that water to be good up there at the state engineer's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I don't know if you want to respond.
I'm Chris Benet with Bureau of Indian Affairs. So I'm not with the county, but I'm a bureaucrat, but I'm a technical guy at heart. So, anyway, to address Mr. Gallegos' comment, as you know, we are, at least the portion of the water rights that the US owns on behalf of the Pueblos, we are pursuing a possible lease with Cuesta for that, to help you with the over-diversions. And in the past, just as it has been in the past. So that's, it's not out of the question. Ultimately, down the line, when there's full build-out of the system in Pawkey Basin, that is likely to be less available, but that's going to be a long, you know, decades down the road. So that's certainly want to pursue, like you say, the community spirit of helping others out.
Mr. Gallegos, I would also echo, we are not aware of communities that could benefit from lease of water, so I would recommend that you send them our way, and we would certainly talk to them about what their needs are and how we can help.
Okay. We have a question from one of the committee members.
I have a question for you about the construction of this water treatment plant. And so, I'm wondering, who is paying for this treatment plant? Is it the federal government dollars? Or in what portion does it come from Santa Fe County, and which portion comes from the federal government? It's a lot of money. How, what is the dollar amount on this proposed plant at Sunny del Fonso?
Yes, many member there, I say. The whole system, the regional water system, is a collaborative effort being funded by the United States, by the county, and by the state of New Mexico. And it's in proportion, well, the part of it that is going to serve the Pueblos is being paid for by the United States. The part of it is going to serve the non-Indians is being paid for by the county and the state together. So the water treatment plant itself is going to serve both Pueblo and non-Pueblo. So the cost for that particular facility would be shared, it would be in proportion to the amount of the treatment plant that's used by the Pueblo, and the amount that's used by the non-Indian communities. I don't know the exact cost of the treatment plant itself, but...
Somebody must.
Yes, yes.
You don't, things, deals like this don't happen without some basic engineering. What is the estimated cost?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, as a taxpayer of New Mexico, I don't want to be supporting that. It doesn't serve me or anybody north of me, or anybody north in the state, period.
Right. The whole system is, what, 175 million? 164 million.
164 million, more or less.
More or less. The US is providing 104 million, and the state is providing 50 million approximately, and the county of Santa Fe is the rest of it.
How much did you, how much did you say the state is paying?
It's about 50 million. There's 45 for the construction, and then they have 5 million for an impairment, what they call the impairment fund.
So has any of this money been actually appropriated?
Yes, yes. I can't remember. It's been probably about 20 million of the state money has been appropriated so far, and the US money is mostly appropriated, probably about 80 million of it has been appropriated. And I can't, I mean, the county, I'm not sure where they are on their contributions.
Looks to me like somebody's got a really good deal. So where's the federal dollars to support all the small mutual domestics in northern New Mexico, all the Aseca associations? Where are those dollars? They're only through the Pueblos.
No, I understand. That's the, one of the outcomes of Indian water rights settlements is these kinds of projects. And they, ideally, they support and provide benefits to both non-Indians and Indians alike. And I think the Abeta, the Abeta settlement is also an example of that.
Well, personal opinions are a little too much on the edge.
Okay, we want to try to get this wrapped up before two. I still do see two more hands, but one that I haven't heard from, so did you want to... I asked a question, yes. Debbie. Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Debbie Martinez. I just have a question for the state engineer's office. When were the last studies done on the aquifers in the northern area for the Taos County and Rio Costilla, all these areas? When were the last studies done?
I'm not with the county, and there isn't a representative present today, but maybe...
Taos planning question.
I know. But in order to transfer water, you should have studies done for the Taos area as well, because you are actually transferring from this community.
What is, what...
Okay. When were the last studies done for the aqua, for the Taos County area and all the surrounding areas up in the northern area? When were they done, prior to this?
Maybe Nathan.
That's up.
I mean, what's New Mexico Tech been providing?
We've done extensive groundwater studies here. We've done it for Pinasco Valley, Miranda Canyon. We've done a spring study survey. We've done the Hondo, which is critical. It's at least a piece of the Abeta, one of the stream systems of the five. Cuesta was just recently done, and the report was given to the village of Cuesta. And Sunshine Valley is on the list, on the worklist for the coming two or three years.
Because, again, our surface water, if you drive around the Taos County, and you look at all these major rivers that used to run are not running, ditches that are not running...
On that point, the Abeta commits us to using groundwater to sustain our streams, and I don't think that issue's really come forward. But mitigation wells mean that streams will go dry, and we'll use groundwater to sustain streams.
And I have a comment to make. If you notice, our climate is changing. Our winter season is going further in to like January, February, March, April. But, you know what? We're not getting that much snow compared to when I was growing up. We'd have a lot of snow. So I can't see where our aquifers could be that, you know...
They're not replenished.
Yeah, they cannot be replenished like that.
Not yet.
Because we're not getting it. We're not getting it. If you look at the trees all over, it's dry, really scary dry. So, to me, that's, I mean, this transferring of water is just, I don't think it should go.
Thank you, Debbie. And, okay, make it real short, because you did...
I just have another question. You're not going to pump water from these wells, right? So are you going to use, cap these wells? Is that what you're going to do? So you're going to cap the wells and use it as seepage through the ground to go to the Rio Grande, right? Is that what the whole thing's about?
There was another, was there someone in front of the window? Oh, there, Charlie, okay.
Put your seat, Charlie.
Who can't see you?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, manager, my friend Bob Malone. My name is Charlie Gonzalez, former commissioner, former mayor of the village of Cuesta. A couple of questions, and I think Ron touched on it, and one of the members from the, I think it was Goncalo that touched on it, and had to do with the Costilla Compact. And your committee is going to recommend to the commission? Is that the process that's going to take place? I would recommend that this be a good subject of discussion, because there's, as I noticed, that when the Costilla Compact was mentioned, it kind of, the people kind of went around it, and didn't really start talking about it. But that is a big issue. That is a big issue, and what I can understand what's going on, that's been totally ignored, and it's been brought in through the, it'd be what, the west side, instead of coming down through the east side. So that should be a one whole topic of discussion, how this transferred, how it would affect the Costilla Compact. Because there's thousands and thousands of acres in that valley over there that are irrigated through the Costilla River. You know, RCCLA has thousands of acres and properties that they use for irrigation. Mascareñas has a big ranch over there, and all of this is going to affect them. You know, there's a lot of effect that's going to happen here. Haroso, in particular. You know, it reminds me of the song where Peter Pollan, Mary sang one year, "Where have all our water rights gone?" 2020, we won't have any water rights. And it's up to you to make that determination, whether they go or not. My recommendation to this committee would be that they set in motion a do-not-pass on these compact transfers that are being looked at. The other thing that kind of concerns me is, and you've got to kind of give me a little bit of time here to find all my notes, but anyway, the process that will take place, will that be under oath? Because one of the questions that, as I was a commissioner before and a mayor, one of the rumors that was talked about is that the reason Santa Fe invited the Pueblos to join, and somebody brought this up, I think it was Goncalo back here, brought it up. And he did a good job of bringing it up, very nice and subtle. But the reason Santa Fe brought in the Pueblos, because to get over, to get the water rights down to Santa Fe, they had to go through the Pueblos as a sovereign nation to make them go, get them to Santa Fe. This, some people need to answer this, and they need to answer under oath. Is this truly what happened? And did it happen? If it didn't happen, fine, but the word is out there, we need to get it answered. Somebody's got to answer to it. And I think you guys can request that those answers be put forth to the commission. We have a couple of commissioners here that have been sitting and listening, and I think it's very important that they do that. Thank you. I know the day's getting late, so enjoy your task. I feel for you, but good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Any comments on that? Okay, there was one, I think you already spoke once, so go ahead and...
This is just a comment.
Do you want...
I'm Johnny Mascareñas, and this is just a comment. But instead of going through all these hashy hash, I think I can buy them water rights and keep them over there, employ our local people. I've been in the business 40 years, and now I incorporate a little business called MTC. I've got all the family working and all the local neighbors that want a job, of course. You know, that's pretty hard to find. But I would like to purchase some water rights, because right now, we tried to apply, to drill a well, just a supplemental well for, like this drought, kind of help all the local farmers there get their crop seed. They won't even listen to us. Why? I don't know. We're the poor people from New Mexico up north. We ain't got enough roads. They won't even fix our roads. Now they're taking our water. I don't know. But I'd like for you guys to consider me.
Thank you, Mr. Mascareñas. Okay, at this point, if there are no further questions, I will go ahead and close the public meeting portion of the session. David, you have one question before...
I'm David Fernandez, and I've been involved in many ways with the water questions for many, many, many years, ever since the beginning of the San Juan Chama project, Terrestrials Association, and very, very familiar with all the different ways the water has flowed in the meantime. I write for newspapers, I have a radio program, I do address water issues and such, and I know it's extremely complicated. I know the story of the AMOT. I know the story of the Abeta up here as well. I'm glad, as Ms. Waltz determined for us, that an EIS on this would probably be available maybe around 2017 or something like that, so... And there's time to carefully consider all the aspects of this. There's no rush, especially from the part of the people up here, especially the people who, as I'm fully in agreement with, the people who are the small communities, the poor people relatively up here. The most important thing is that we need strong leadership in the north. We need strong voices on behalf of our waters, on behalf of our Asecas, on behalf of our heritage, all these things. And I want to just recommend to this, to you, that you, a recommendation is that at this point, that you recommend going slowly, or recommend that it not take place, the transfer, pending deep, deep, and participative community involvement every step of the way, because so many people are affected. And money, we're talking loads and loads of money, hundreds of millions for AMOT, hundreds of, over 100 million for Abeta, and so forth. The bottom line is not so much money, it's the effect on our people here. And I'm speaking as somebody who's been an observer, but also very much involved in every aspect of... every aspect of, of water here, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. And if there are no further questions or comments, I will close the public meeting portion of this, and at this point, the applicants have an opportunity to clarify any, any responses or to make any rebuttal on any question, comments that were made.
Mr. Chairman, just, just briefly, if I could just take a couple minutes to explain Santa Fe County's rule and how Santa Fe County became involved in this case, because I think we've heard a couple times that Santa Fe is using the Pueblos to get water. And just wanna make it clear that we're here representing Santa Fe County, not the city of Santa Fe. The, the county's involvement was fairly late in the process. That case got going in, in 1961, 66, was, had multiple trials, a lot of disputes. And finally, the parties, who were mainly the Pueblos and the asequia associations, decided that they wanted to try settlement discussions, and they started saying, saying that in about 1999 and 2000, they started formalizing those discussions, they hired a mediator, the state of New Mexico started participating. And it was those local groups, the asequia associations, mainly led by David Ortiz, and then by the Pueblo leaders, who thought that the way to settle the case was to get a community water system. And at that point, they, there was some talk that it would be a Pueblo-only system. I think people in the community said, no, it should be available for any community member, whether they're on Pueblo land or not. They started looking around, trying to see, well, who would, who could run, help run this system and help pay for it? And they, then they came to Santa Fe County. At that point, Santa Fe County hadn't been involved in the case at all, and they said, would you start participating in these discussions, because we might need you to help with this water system? And it's a water system for the Pohque Valley, it's not a water system for the city of Santa Fe. And so that's how Santa Fe County got involved, and it's not some scheme to get water to the city of Santa Fe. We are trying to get water to a basin that's very short on water and settle these longstanding disputes, and, and Santa Fe County is gonna put in a fair amount of money to help build this system. We wanna see it used. At one point, there was a proposal to, that people should be required to get on the system, and that did not go over well. So we have gone to a carrot approach. So existing domestic well owners are getting, being given incentives to get on the system. Anyone in the future who come, who, who comes in, who wants to be a new user, who isn't there now, they have to get on the system. So it's gonna be a little bit of a balancing act, and it's a typical northern New Mexico situation, where we're trying to tread lightly and still get to the end of the, of the path. Thank you.
And thank you to the, the applicants of your presentation, the responses to questions. Thank all of you for being here and attending a three-hour meeting and giving us your input. Thank you very much for participating. And at this point, it's time for the committee to deliberate. If the committee so chooses, we also have to submit a written report to the county commissioners on our decision. So I guess at this point, I would open it up for further deliberation by the committee members, any.
Can we take time off?
Maybe we can get to deliberation. We don't, we really don't wanna break it up. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a meeting on the 13th?
We do have a meeting scheduled for the 13th that we had planned prior to this, and so that might be a good time to, to actually deliberate further. And so it's a will of the committee, and if you wanna deliberate now and decide now or wait till the 13th.
What is our deadline on the written report? Do you have such a thing?
Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's open-ended at this point, because we don't know when publication is gonna occur, but we were told at the very beginning of the county's present, the Santa Fe County's presentation, that it was going to happen soon. Once publication occurs, it's three publications and then ten days after the last one, so that's two weeks plus ten days. So that's a very short fuse. So if you put it off to the 13th, and then you need to make your recommendation, and that has to match up with a county commission meeting, you could easily be in a bind.
So you're recommending we make a decision today?
I, I would recommend that you do that, unless Santa Fe County is willing to hold
The county attorney's correct, we, we don't know when the notice is gonna be forthcoming. But once it comes, the state engineer gives you a certain timeframe within which you have to publish it. I think it's sixty days. And so I, I would hate to say you'd be safe meeting on the 13th. I think you're getting good advice to go ahead, because I know that the, the Pueblo representatives who are actually meeting today are wanting to move forward with that as soon as possible, because there's, that, that date of 2017 is also the timeframe within which we are trying to complete the transfer. So they're wanting to move forward. So I think I would suggest you listen to the counsel of your, of your county attorney. And just in closing, though, we, on behalf of Santa Fe County and also our other, other co-applicants, we thank you for scheduling this meeting, and we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and, and present information. And Santa Fe County certainly wants to have good working relationships with its, its sister county. And so we thank you for your time, and if there's other information we could provide, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nathan, did you have anything? Did you have anything further to add before we?
Staff don't have nothing further to add, but if you wanna schedule another meeting within this week, just to discuss, or so you can review all the materials that were presented to you. I, I don't know what.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chairman, I'm not sure that Nathan is familiar with the open meeting publication requirements, but there would be a seventy-two hour requirement, so it'd be very difficult to schedule another meeting.
Within this week?
Within this week.
Or when's the board of commissioners scheduled to, to review?
Our next county commission meeting after tomorrow, obviously, it, it's not on the agenda for tomorrow, so it's not gonna be taken up by the county commission tomorrow, would be the 21st.
The 21st, and that's when we'd have to have that recommendation to the board of commissioners a week prior to that.
At least a week prior to that, Nathan.
Okay.
Okay, so the recommendation then is to go ahead and act today? Do you think it's gonna take that long? You wanna take a ten-minute break and then come back and, and then proceed with our deliberation and make a decision today? Okay, so I'll go ahead and, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Motion? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, who made the break? You made the motion? Ron, Gardner made the motion? Seconded by Tanya to break for ten minutes and then come back? Okay, all in favor, okay, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll break for ten minutes, that's about, oh. Fifteen after two fifteen, okay. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting and get back to our order of business, which is now for the committee, the Taos County Water Advisory Committee, to deliberate and to rate, we have a form that, with ten criteria to actually rate the, the possible effects that the transfer could create if it goes through. And so, unless any of the other committee members have any comments before we get started, we'll just go ahead and start from top to the bottom and, and then individually rate each criteria, and then we can maybe come back together and rate, rate them as a group or have a motion to proceed. So the first, the first criteria is cultural protection. And, and we have a definition of what cultural protection is, so I don't think I need to read that or elaborate anymore on that. But go ahead and rate what impact on cultural protection this particular transfer would
What are we calling it, strong?
We have the choices of.
No, numbers, or what are we calling these? Are we using numbers?
Whether it's impacts.
Oh, just checking.
I don't think we need to quantify it, I think just say, yeah, okay. So the cultural protection is number one. Number two is agrarian character of the land that the water rights are being transferred from. Would this have an effect on the agrarian character of the top-of-the-world lands, the lands around the Utah Mountain? And the third criteria is ecological health of the watershed, the vitality of the watershed. Would this water transfers impact the ecological health of the, of the land? And the fourth is a long-term economic development potential. Would this affect the economic development potential of, of the land? Number five is a recreational and tourism impact. Would there be a recreational and tourism impact here? And number six is public information. Has there been adequate public information or public, information to the public regarding Number seven is water supply management. Is the demands and supply gonna, gonna be there for the, for the, this transfer to be Number eight, conservation. Conservation, is there, is it gonna have a conserv, impact on conservation of water on this, on this land? And number nine is conjunctive management, the hydrology. Does the hydrology make sense? As it has been explained today, that the wells would be closed down, the water theoretically would flow to Pohque area, would be pumped and used, utilized there. And finally, number ten is, would this be minimizing water contamination, water contamination And with that, we can do our totals and have discussion, deliberation, or move forward in the way the will, the committee would like to proceed. Okay, comments or? Ready to take action? Okay, if that's the case, entertain a motion that would say something to the effect that the Taos Water Advisory Committee either recommends either to protest the transfer of these water rights or recommends no protest on the transfer of these water rights. Do we have a motion? Gloriana.
I move that we not, we recommend to the county, Taos County Commissioners not to approve the transfer of water rights, to protest.
Okay, we have a motion by Gloriana to recommend to the county commission that we protest the transfer of these water rights from the top of the world to the Santa Fe County area.
Second.
Second by Albert Michael. Discussion.
My score came up that way.
Ron?
It's consistent.
Okay.
Actually, we're looking at a matrix that has ten of the public welfare values, and I see one, two, three, four, five. Six of those values to be, have impacts by this transfer.
Seven of the criteria.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gardner's correct. If you could make those based on the ten criterias of your findings, if you wanna announce that each one of you have written certain findings within those, that matrix, that way I could, that way I'm able to transfer those findings into the written document.
Okay.
Do you want our names on these?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Do you just want the paper, or you want us to specifically state?
Yeah, however you wanna do it, but I have some findings to reflect on the criteria. If you're gonna just do, finding is just the six criterias, if you could just announce some finding.
Each individually, what we have found, is that what you?
You know, just give the, give the, the number that you, of, of these criteria that you had, that showed the had an impact, and which one specifically? Okay, we'll start with Ron.
I have, number one, the cultural protection, and I think anytime we lose water rights, that impacts our, our water supply. Obviously, our agrarian character and our, our ditches and our irrigated lands are finding it very difficult to accommodate their needs up here. Number four, long-term economic development potential. Obviously, the long-term economic development potential that's going to Santa Fe County is the same, it should be here in Taos County. Number six, public information. I think that the advisory board's done a good job of getting the information out, and on that count, I, I think we did a good job of that. Water supply management is the, the same issue. Those water rights could have been right here for the town of Taos. And conjunctive management is always an issue, as we were taking testimony on the impacts of the wells of the river. Let me see, that's, that's my six.
Strong impact on the cultural protection, especially agrarian character, ecological, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sitting way back here. The ecological health and watershed vitality is highly impacted. Long-term economic development potential, therefore, I mean, why do we put our water rights to Santa Fe County for, for that basin to come along? And up here, we're impoverished once again. Public information has been fairly good, but there were some things that came out today that we didn't even know about, like the price tag and the negotiation between ABETA and AMAT people, even though they didn't come to an agreement. Recreational tourism being our number one, number one economy here, it's not really known how it impacts. Water supply management is impacted. Conservation is impacted. The hydrology of the conjunctive management, I think there's many unknowns that need to be clarified. Water contamination is probably the biggest deal. So I had seven items with high impact, according to these criteria.
Okay, thank you, Tanya, and I have four that would have impact. The agrarian character of the land would be affected, long-term economic development would be affected, water man, supply management is a question mark, and the conjunctive, conjunctive management hydrology is, is still a question. So that's, I had four. Gloriana.
Why don't you go to him, I'm still kind of working.
Okay.
Okay, I've got nine impacts. One I don't have is the recreational tourism. The cultural protection, it does not protect the water basins of the Costilla Ditch or the Haroso Ditch Association, or lower Pueblos in Taos County, Taos Pueblo and Picaries, or the farming community of Cerro Cuesta. or the farming community of Cerro Cuesta, San Cristobal, Hondo, Taos Espanola. In accordance with the land and water element portion of Taos County Comprehensive Plan or the Taos Regional Water Plan, it defies some objectives. It goes against the rich cultural heritage and the people in Taos County that are committed to maintaining this cultural heritage. The heritage consists of the agricultural land-based rural culture with strong water and land traditions. Our two senators just sponsored an agricultural bill to address drought and to restore the fowl farmland back into production. And information on all this will be available at an Agricultural Resource Fair Friday, April 10th, at the Juan J. Gonzalez Memorial Agricultural Center in Taos. There will be two roundtable discussions, one at 10:30 and one at 1:30, to discuss ways to keep the farming tradition alive.
Okay.
Impact on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty. Okay, so at this point, we have the deliberation. We have a motion on the floor, motion made by Albert Marty Michaels, or no, motion made by Gloriana Atencio, seconded by Albert.
One member hasn't given her scoring yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, we passed by. Okay, go ahead, Gloriana.
I have eight that would be impacted. The cultural protection, it will have an impact on people of northern New Mexico. Agrarian character, it will affect those living near and downstream from Sunshine Valley. Number three, ecological health watershed, it will have an impact and more problems will arise. As in Texas, right now, we're involved with a lawsuit with them because they're not getting their share of water. So obviously, they're going to get less water. And long-term economic development, they're thinking of the development in Santa Fe County. And I mean, there's a lot of development going on. And here in Taos County, we really can't have much development. And number six, public information. Information from members of the... That have been involved with the Amon Water Settlement, they have... A lot of them are very much against it. It sounded like today that the people were for the Amon Settlement. I'm thinking of one specific person that has written a lot on this in the New Mexican is Orlando Romero from Nambay. And the conjunctive management, it's still questionable. And minimizing the water contamination, I don't see how they're going to minimize the water contamination. So that's...
Thank you, Gloriana. I think now we have the input from all our members. And so we still have the motion made by Gloriana and seconded by Albert. Any further questions, comments?
Do I get to finish mine?
Are you?
I issues. Because I have something. I've got nine impact, nine that are considering that impact.
Okay, I thought you went through the nine criteria already. Okay, go ahead.
Agrarian character. Will this diminish historic sustainable farmland in the county and remove water to sustain agrarian use downstream? Will it affect hay production in Taos County? The basic main industry of northern New Mexico now that the mine is gone? Turning the mountains in the Rio Grande, control over to the Fed limits all access to other natural resources, which cripples the local economy. Water is the only resource that will be this county's salvation and survival. Ecological health, watershed vitality. Will subsidence affect aquifer discharge through the springs? Will abrasive action of water movement reduce upper aquifer levels in times of drought? In times of drought, air pollution and wind erosion will diminish the topsoil and wildlife will be encouraged to graze surrounding irrigated properties and damaged crops. Long-term economic development potential. Water for future development for farm has been active. Farm has been active for years, generating grocery seeds. There's a subdivision across the road. Water could be used for that development, for future population growth and for factories, et cetera, Pueblo's growth and development or surrounding areas. Recreation and tourism. Is this water going to be used for casinos and riverside recreation, such as rafting? Will ecolike bacteria from human and domestic pet activity along the trails and river increase to dangerous levels like Enchama? To take a staple resource to supply one fun spot and attract tourists is not what the water was intended for. It was intended for local residents' recreational use, which is hunting, fishing, wood hauling, pineon picking, and wild berry harvest, all for provision of sustainability. Tourism conflicts with industry and local prosperity. Public information, there's no 40-year plan on the use. The water distribution hasn't... We haven't been provided with the information of who's going to get the water, who's actually going to get the water, and exactly what they're going to be using it for. Okay, so the public information seems to be distorted somewhat. The aquifer discharge ratio, to recharge ratio, this is the... This is the water supply management. Basically, there is none because there's no discharge control and there's no method of guaranteeing that the Pueblo's going to get, the Pueblos are going to get their water. It's kind of like experimental type of discharge and it's not... If it was to be pumped to the Rio Grande, then they would be guaranteed that they're going to get their water. Okay, so it hinders the Pueblos down there. And it also is... It's just not conventional discharge. So I'm against it on that, on the water management. There's no water management. Okay, conservation during topsoil loss from wind erosion. Ranch displaces topsoil in the areas that are not cultivated as it stands. Nutrients will be depleted from the soil, from pivot areas because of alfalfa and certain crops replace the nitrogen to the topsoil. Topsoil is very permeable in that area, so drought may change the dry farm condition and ranch production levels drastically. Southerly prevailing winds could dry it up quickly. And native and invasive plants will overtake all of it at some time. The sagebrush will take over it at some point, okay? Conjunctive management, the natural, will the natural spring discharge be equal or greater than the recharge? In time, discharge may exceed recharge, depleting wells and seccios from further up. Okay, and 10, minimizing contamination. pH levels and chemical reaction caused by the rate of flow and acidic levels increase from heavy metals and other mineral, other minerals, contact with other minerals. There's alkaline soil. You can see the alkaline soil out there where the initial discharge is going to be hitting from the wells. All that watershed area down below it has brought up a lot of alkali and it's created salty loam and you can't grow anything there. Okay, so that's my statement.
Thank you, Albert. Okay, the motion on the floor is that the Water Advisory Committee recommend to the county commission that they do protest to transfer these water rights from the top of the world. Anything else? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, looks like we have a majority on that. Actually, unanimous on that. Okay, continuing with the agenda, other business and new business. Is there anything?
Okay. This report, the written report, how do we constitute what goes in that? Who's writing it and...
Maybe Nathan can give us... Because we do have that meeting on the 13th to finalize the written report.
Yeah, I'll come up with the draft and I'll work with the staff director and of course legal. And I'll come up with the written description.
Give you a call or communicate with you some of the things that we feel need to be on there.
Yeah, definitely. I'll get you guys a copy. And if I'm missing anything, I'll forward it to all of you. Of course, I'll have to hand deliver it to you and I'll make sure you have...
I'm going to call you because I've got some things that seem to show up today.
Yeah, it's on the agenda if we have, if you have anything.
I do. After this hearing, I'd like to see if we could get a liaison from the Abyta Settlement or Water Advisory Board. So when we have questions of the Abyta, we can... Like when we're reviewing these, obviously, the negotiation between the Abyta and the Amon actually played a big role in the events that occurred.
Well, we could ask, I don't know if anyone would like to...
Yeah, he's attorney.
I'll look into it and see if we can find someone. And when we do have these type of hearings, I'll try to make sure that we have one person that could represent the settlement at the meeting.
There's no further business. And the one announcement we would have is that we'll be meeting again on the 13th. That's next week, 10 o'clock this time, 10 o'clock. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we want to adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
I move, okay.
Motion by Tanya, seconded by Gloriana.
Do you have the commissioner in the back?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have a heart attack. I'm not going to say anything. I just want to thank you guys for your time today. And I think all the stuff that was said, with the exception of just a couple of things, were very informative to me and I want to thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, too.
Yeah, well, thank you for thanking us.
Okay.
It helps.
Tanya and a second by Gloriana. All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned until next month.
Thanks. Thanks for all your help. Appreciate it.